Good morning. Call to order this May 14, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors, and welcome to the worst allergy day of the year.[13.01][13.01](laughter) Would the clerk please call the roll?
Good morning Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
There.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on the Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 17, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you, and would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, for your consent matters, items 1 through 33, I do need a motion to continue item 9. This is to terminate a contract with KP LLC and approve a new contract for consolidated utilities billing and service, print and mail bill, online presentment and customer portal services.
So move. Please vote.
Mr. Natoli.
My screen went dark.
His screen doesn't work.
I vote yes, but yeah, register.
I'm gonna just go ahead and call a vote as unanimous vote. I also need a motion to continue item 14, authorization to execute horse lease agreements with sheriff's office personnel for the use of horses and mounted enforcement as needed during the period of June 1 through May 31.
Move to continue? Please vote. Which item?
Why are we continuing?
I don't have any notes on the item.
There's a couple of questions that came up that I need to work with the sheriff's office, come back on May 21.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think they're working on that issue. Sorry about that. Unanimous vote. That concludes the clerk's notes.
Okay, is there any questions from members of the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Chair, I'd like to pull item 5 from the consent calendar. We can discuss it this morning and/or this afternoon. I wish to do it, but there's been some recent correspondence, as I'm sure my colleagues are aware, as well as I had some questions about that, so.
Okay, we will schedule that to 9:45.
Okay.
Any others?
Yes, I'd like the record reflect, I'm recusing myself from item 21.
Thanks.
Potential business conflict.
Okay, I have no speaker slips from the audience on consent, so with that, is there a motion? So, second, and we will move approval of the consent calendar as amended.
Mr. Chair, I think Mike Penrose, did you have an item?
Yes, we did.
Okay, I'm just, I saw you approach a mic, so maybe you want to speak before we can vote on.
Thank you Supervisor. We are asking to drop item 40 from this agenda, we'll be bringing it back. Mike, that's a timed item. Oh, sorry. Sorry about, that's a timed item. Sorry, timed item, yeah, okay. Already retired there, Mr. Penrose? Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Okay. Gentlemen, needs a hearing device behind you, too.
Okay. Unanimous vote, let the record reflect that Supervisor Peters recused from item 21 for a potential conflict of interest.
Still, it didn't record my vote, still. Try it again. Okay, you want to try it again? I voted yes, and it came up on the board. Oh, that's my great question, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we get started with the presentations then while we deal with the technical difficulties?
Okay, sorry about that.
Mr. Chair, just for the record, I voted yes on all those items, and I, okay.
Yes, I noted that in the record.
I know you noted it, okay, I just want to be clear.
Item 34 is the presentation of resolution honoring Saint Ignatius Parish School Academic Decathlon Team upon winning first place in the Catholic Schools Junior High Academic Decathlon State Championships.
I'm gonna make a few comments, and then I'll ask the coaches to introduce the students and make any comments they like. First, though, Saint Ignatius Academic Decathlon Team finished first place at the State Catholic Schools Junior High Academic Decathlon. That needs an acronym, because that's too long to say, you know? The Junior High Academic Decathlon is a competition for students in 6th through 8th grade that consists of a logic quiz, a super quiz, and eight individual knowledge tests. These hardworking students, with the support and help of their coaches and parents, begin studying at the start of the school year on weekends, holidays, and recess, in addition to the normal schoolwork, and I know you all have extracurricular activities like student council and sports and service organizations. The Saint Ignatius Academic Decathlon Team first competed against 21 local Catholic Schools for the title of Sacramento Diocese Champions. Saint Ignatius has won this competition for the last 12 years in a row. In April, the team competed against 10 schools throughout California, as well as a school from the Archdiocese of Denver, and won first place overall, among first place in the logic quiz, religion and science, and second place in math, fine arts, social studies, third place in super quiz and literature, and fifth place in English, but first place overall. It's my pleasure on behalf of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to present each student and coaches Erin McGraw and Carlos Contreras with this resolution to recognize their tremendous accomplishment of winning the 2019 Catholic Schools State Academic Decathlon. So, Ms. McGraw, can you introduce the students? I want to give you this resolution first, and this is to honor you and the school and all of these students.
Thank you so much.
And then afterwards, I'll have the individual resolutions.
So, on our team, again, we have 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. We have Veronica Hartono, who was second place in math. She did that as a 2nd, as a 7th grader, even though that's typically 8th grade and high school level math. Kami Alvarez did literature, and she scored 3rd place overall in the entire state. Erica Pham did fine arts, 2nd place in the entire state. Tommy Goyet did current events, and was 3rd in our entire diocese. Ariel Montevergen and Irene Kurtu are what we call our 910s, so they really specialize in logic and some of our overall super quiz categories. Super quiz is kind of like a Jeopardy-style event. MJ Gillis was social studies for 3rd year in a row, and I believe 2nd place in state. Mason Fat did English grammar and was 5th place in state. Griffin Malloy did science for the 3rd year in a row, and was 1st place in the entire state. And Kate Cogerton, for the 2nd year in a row, was 1st place in the entire state for religion. So, they're a very impressive team.[544.12][544.12](applause)
Just, I have individual resolutions for all of you, and just to make sure your parents can saw the shorter people in the back. I've been short all my life, so I know what it's like to be behind the tall people. Maybe you come up to the microphone, I'll give you the resolution, you can say who you are and what grade you're in, okay? You'll have to call the names out for me. Okay. Veronica Hartono. Okay, if she wants to say something.
My name is Veronica Hartono, and I'm in 7th grade.
Great, congratulations. Here's your resolution for your college resume. Kami Alvarez.
My name is Kami Alvarez, and I'm in 7th grade.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your resolution. Go look out behind you.
My name is Erica Pham, and I'm in 7th grade.
Great, congratulations. Resolution?
My name is Ariel Montevergen, and I'm in 7th grade. Thank you.
I'm Tommy Goyet, and I'm in 8th grade.
Thank you, congratulations.
My name is Irene Kurtu, and I'm in 6th grade.
Wow, congratulations.
Thank you.
My name is MJ Gillis, and I'm in 8th grade.
Great, congratulations.
My name is Mason Fat, and I'm in 8th grade.
Thank you. Congratulations.
My name is Griffin Malloy, and I'm in 8th grade.
Congratulations, Griffin.
Thank you.
My name is Kate Cogerton, and I'm in 8th grade.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, you can all watch this at 6 o'clock on Friday night. If that's my phone, would you turn it off? Sorry, I'm not sure I turn it off. You can watch it on television on Channel 14 at 6 o'clock on Friday night. We also have a YouTube channel.
That was a pope calling to congratulate you all, so.
That was the president, sorry, you couldn't take the call. So, if you, I think we're gonna take a picture, and so if you'd all come into the, up here, tall people in back, tall people rule for just a moment, all the way back here. Spread out as the will. Teachers? Do parents want to come up and have their picture taken, too? Oh, come on. Well, congratulations.[754.12][754.12](applause) How did my teacher disappear, too?
Item 35 is the Service Award recognizing Neng Kang for 35 years of county service.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It is an honor to stand here before you to present this Service Award to Neng Kang for 35 years of service with the county of Sacramento. Neng began his career as an eligibility worker on January 19, 1984, at our 28th Street office, working in the AFC program, which later became AFDC, and now is Cow Works. Neng is passionate about his family and community. As a Hmong and Laos special skills worker, he has helped with the translation of forms for the department to better serve his community. For many years, he was an active member with the Asian and Pacific Islander Caucus and assisted with Hmong New Year's activities while a member. He is the father of seven children, four girls and three boys, and as of today, he has 19 children. He remarked that one of his daughter got married recently, so that number is probably going to increase. He is the author of two books, one is The Kang Family Tree, and the other one is Detail How To on the Funeral Rituals and Traditions for the Hmong. Neng believes this will be his last appearance before the board, as he sees his retirement in the close horizon. He remains thankful for his time with the department. Neng, congratulations, and thank you for serving our community.
Thank you.[898.12][898.12](applause)
Thank you, thank you, the board, thank you, the chambers, that allowed me to be here. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to my family. I have, like, my program managers, Sal Sanchez introduced me. He's my current program manager at this point. I have seven childrens, four daughters and three sons. They are here, you know, in the back of the chamber here. Thank you for my family to be, support me to work all these years with the county. And first of all, I'd like to thank you, my supervisor, current supervisor, Carol Smith, for being such a good supervisor, support me all the way. My program manager, Sal Sanchez, and Donna Door, including the director, Ann Atwood, that allowed me to work for the county Department of Human Assistance for all these years. Stepped into this department 35 years ago, and today, I'm here. Thank you very much. Thank you for the Department of Human Assistance that gave me this award, to be here with the chambers, so thank you very much, thank you. And also, the last final, thank you for all those customers that I've been serving for the last 35 years in Sacramento County. Besides, if there's no of you all customer in Sacramento County, I won't be here today. But thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.[998.43][998.43](applause)
Hey, let's have a picture of the.
Get them all up there, sorry.
What, my program manager? Yeah. You want to take a minute?
Yeah, all the kids can go up there, take pictures.
Come down, it's your last chance.
Yeah, come on down, yeah, that's right.
So they can be on the side. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Just to let you know that the, this will be televised on Friday evening on Channel 14, so you'll all be on television, so, there you go.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Item 36 is the rename a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Searle Recreation Area.
Chair Kennedy, thank you so much. Liz Bellis, Director of Regional Parks. I am absolutely honored to be here today to present this item to you, requesting to rename a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Searle Recreation Area. For those of you who are visual, I put the map up there, so you can see the area that we are renaming. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, family members were not able to attend today. One of our speakers will read a note from the family. Before I read these wherethes into the record, I just want to say that I had the good fortune to work with Frank very early on in my career. He was a remarkable man. He did so many things for parks, for the American River Parkway, and truly was a wonderful partner to work with. He knew absolutely how to bring people together, to work together, to create things that we wouldn't have if he hadn't taken the role, leadership role that he did, for example, the Fair Oaks Bluff. Also, he spent many, many years working as, he was the president for Save the American River Association, and then later became president emeritus of Save the American River Association. He served on the Recreation and Park Commission for many years, and was just a kind man with a voice of logic that you could turn to, to get a good understanding of what the general population felt about parks, and how important the American River Parkway was to everyone. So I'm going to read this resolution into the record for you. Whereas Frank F. Searle is being honored with the dedication of renaming a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area as the Frank F. Searle Recreation Area, for his many years of distinguished and dedicated service to the people of Sacramento County. And whereas Frank F. Searle was inducted into the California Park and Recreation Society's Hall of Honor in 2016, and the county of Sacramento joins in expressing sincere appreciation and gratitude for his hard work, personal interests, and countless contributions to the overall betterment of our community. And whereas Frank F. Searle was appointed by the County Board of Supervisors to serve on the Recreation and Park Commission from 1973 through 1978. And whereas Frank F. Searle saw a need for preserving and protecting the American River Parkway. To that end, he promoted bond issues and fundraising efforts for land acquisition, including preserving the public access to the Fair Oaks overlook. He was instrumental in removing a sewage plant, trailer court, and tavern from within the boundaries of the American River Parkway. He battled in court against East Bay Municipal Utility District for over 20 years to prevent the district from diverting water from the American River through the Folsom South Canal, and was a key player in establishing a flow standard for the Lower American River. He helped prevent development of a golf course and 40-acre parking lot in the floodplain of Bushy Lake next to Cal Expo, and he formed the Lake Natoma Community Task Force to protect Lake Natoma from development. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Board of Supervisors, county of Sacramento, state of California, on behalf of the people of Sacramento County, do hereby approve the renaming of a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Searle Recreation Area, to honor the legacy of good work and important publications of Frank F. Searle for his many years of distinguished service to the people of Sacramento. We do have several speakers in the audience, and of course, I believe you need to take a vote on item 2, so.
We already voted on it.
Did you vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
faux pas.
We don't let you get up there until we vote on it, okay?
Okay, good, good.
I do have some cards, and I will start by calling Assembly Member Roger Dickinson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members. It's always a pleasure to come back and see you for a few minutes. And this, this morning in particular, it is truly both an honor and a pleasure to be before you to support the naming of part of the Parkway in memory of Frank Searle. I want to also, though, add that while we may just be putting Frank's name on the plaque and in the record books, it would be an oversight of a severe character to not also remember Doris's, his wife's, contributions as well. Because Frank and Doris were truly a team. A team of fierce, yet genteel advocates for and protectors of the American River Parkway. You heard in the resolution just some of the contributions that Frank and Doris made to preserving what is clearly and identifiably the jewel of Sacramento County, the American River Parkway. All of us who've had the privilege of serving on the Board of Supervisors, I think appreciate beyond measure how valuable the Parkway is to our county, and indeed to our state. It's something that we talk about wherever we go, whoever we, we speak with. And Frank and Doris were a major part of making sure that what we get the privilege of governing, of promoting, of taking care of as stewards, is in fact there for us today and for generations in the future. History is not just about places and dates. It's truly about the people who have built our county, who have led our communities, who have made our place where we find ourselves today to build upon for a better future. And nothing allows us better to mark the contributions of those to our history than naming specific sites in their honor. So this morning, as I said, it is an extreme honor and pleasure to support this item before you, and to thank you, to thank you for taking this, this action, so that generations yet to come, who will enjoy and appreciate the American River Parkway just as we do today, will know that Frank Searle was an indispensable part of what they will treasure just as we have. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. And if anything is ever named after me, I am inviting you to (laughter) hate comments. Jim Geary.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. My name is Jim Geary, and I had the distinct pleasure of working with Frank Searle for more than 30 years on the Epi's Great Race Committee, and almost as many years on Epi's Wellness Foundation. Frank was truly a renaissance man. I don't know if many people know that Frank was a charter member of the Greatest Generation. He served in Merchant Marine as an officer aboard a freighter in the Mediterranean during the height of the Africa and Italian Command, or Battles. He also was a mentor to me, as well as many other people on Epi's Great Race Committee. One thing Frank was, was meticulous. Anyone who met with Frank about any issue, Frank had his list, he'd go through it, never quarrelsome about it, usually educated you to his point of view, and by and large, Frank Frank was also an athlete. Frank spent many years on the Parkway, training, running, biking, boating, and he was also an accomplished cross-country skier well into his senior, senior years. But most of all, I think we remember Frank as a mentor. And listening to today's agenda, I think Frank would have had two reactions. One is he would have been embarrassed that they were naming part of the trail after him. But more so, he would have been very, very proud of the Saint Ignatius young men and women that appeared earlier today. Because if there was one thing that Frank had as an abiding principle, it was for the future, and the future generations. We can do nothing better than honor Frank's legacy by naming this portion of the Parkway after Frank Searle. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Green?
My name is Stephen Green, I'm president of Save the American River Association. It seems that in this position, I'm constantly confronting new issues involving the Parkway. And when that happens, I think, what would Frank Searle have done? He absolutely was a mentor, he was an inspiration. Working with him over the years was absolutely one of the best parts of my life. I really enjoyed it. In 1985, I was president of a homeowner association on the bluffs above Lake Natoma, and I got a call from Frank Searle, who introduced himself and said, "Did you know that the state has just approved putting an RV park on the Lake Natoma shoreline?" And I said, "You've got to be kidding me." He said, "No." He says, "Could you get involved with me in putting an end to this?" And I did, and worked with Frank ever since. This is a wonderful tribute to name this area Frank, who accomplished so much for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome Commissioner. Welcome, Commissioner.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. Ron Suter, 9340 Cantor Drive, Elk Grove, Chairman Kennedy and Board members. Gives me a great pleasure to address this board recommending the adoption of the resolution dedicating and renaming a portion of the Upper Sunrise Recreation Area, the Frank F. Cyril Recreation Area. I would like to thank Nav Gill, Rob Leonard, former park director Jeff Leatherman, and of course Liz Bellis for moving this item forward. I brought this dictionary. Oh, first I want to say, my two daughters go to St. Ignatius. And in five years, you'll see my little Alex up here in front of you. I guarantee it. And I'll be right here with them. Dictionary, if you were to look up the word Frank Cyril or find the word in the dictionary, it would be honest, passionate, and always doing the right thing for the right reason. In my many years as a park director, Frank was always very respectful of the county's ways and sometimes the slow-moving wheels of the county, but he was very passionate about making sure that he was respectful of your opinion, and he would always try to make your opinion his opinion and make it work for everybody. Make it work for the residents of the county, make it work for the lovers of the American River Parkway. I do, out of script, I got a letter from Lisa, his daughter. And it says, "We've tried to work this so that Curtis, her son, his son, and his daughter could be here." And that's what we had been working on for a couple of months. And so this is a note from Lisa about 30 minutes ago. "Ron, well unfortunately, as I predicted, my mom has developed side effects," it would be Doris, "from the antibiotics that she'll be taking for the next seven days, and I need to be with her full-time. I'm truly sorry, I will not be able to attend the morning meeting of the supervisors. The best thing I can do to honor my father today is to take care of my mother. Good luck this morning and thank you. Thank you for making this dream a reality for the family. Fondly, Lisa." So unfortunately, and it saddens me that she could not be here because she was very, very truly feeling about what we were doing for her. She was, I can't express the words truly how she felt. It was such an honor. Also, during my tenure as the county, I understood addressing the board and making it quick, getting done, sitting down and asking you to take a vote. So that's it. I'm sitting down, asking you to take a vote, and remember the dictionary. I'll see you in five years. Probably not, probably sooner.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I actually stand corrected. We did things a little out of order in our usual business, and we do need to vote on the motion, so I will make the motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. And we do have comments from Board members. Supervisor Frost.
I want to thank Liz Bellis and all the staff and everyone who was involved in creating this beautiful tribute to Mr. Frank Cyril, who I did not know. I believe he was before my time. In '73, I was in high school, but I was around. And I know about people like him. Every now and then, a champion emerges, someone who understands the importance of something and that it's worth fighting for. And they do truly make a difference in our world, but sometimes, over time, these things unfold and it goes sort of unnoticed. And so to pay tribute to his leadership and advocacy and dedication and ongoing commitment to protect and improve the American River Parkway and our community is a beautiful way to pay tribute to his life. And unfortunately, he's not here to enjoy that, but I'm glad, I'm happy for his family who can enjoy this moving forward and for all of us who can look back and remember and know things that we wouldn't have known. Those of us that weren't there wouldn't have known if it wasn't for this. So thank you all for being here, and I want to offer a special congratulations to Lisa and Curtis and the family for this tremendous honor for their father Frank Cyril.
Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would certainly echo all the comments that were major this morning and thank all those who spoke, certainly former colleague Roger Dickinson, but those who've had a close association with Frank and certainly Doris and the family over the years. And would just note that, as the comments that were shared, that I did have the opportunity to work with Frank in a couple of different capacities. Certainly in my earlier years with the county, working on behalf of my predecessor Toby Johnson, in some of the years when the county was litigating the whole issue with East Bay Mud as related to the take from the American River, where that point of discharge would be. Frank's leadership with the Save the American River Association, certainly with other defenders of the Parkway in this county, it was rock solid. He would make sure that this board, in its construct at the time, but certainly that the community that he was able to reach out to were well aware of the implications of the East Bay Mud, who sought, under some previous actions, to take water at the Folsom South Canal, what devastation that would bring potentially to the American River Parkway. And along with that, though, as I think Liz Bellis noted and certainly embedded in the resolution, his work on a lot of different fronts, to see to it that the land areas were protected along the Parkway and certainly that the interests of those who would recreate and enjoy and I think for the time that he was here, but also recognizing, I think he recognized very clearly in his wisdom, that the Parkway would be here for all time and that what he could do in his efforts over the course of the many decades was to protect it from intrusion, but also uses that would be incompatible. I know it was referenced in the resolution that the golf course that was proposed on the Cal Expo property, if I remember right, the then general manager of Expo was a general by name of Kirk Reed. He was famous for wearing the cowboy hat and being a little bit of a cowboy in his approach, I think. And I think Frank, along with obviously others, Sarah and certainly other interested community members, took that on head-on and made it very clear to the general public that Bushy Lake and the surrounding environments of the American River on the southern edge of the Cal Expo property were important for a lot of different reasons, and they weren't, you know, necessarily to be developed for uses that might have a recreational aspect to them, but certainly wouldn't be compatible with the, I think, the true intent of the Parkway. I would just say, too, that his approach, as was noted by many others this morning, was very respectful, but very, very firm. I think Roger described it, Dickinson, as being fierce. And he can be fierce at times and yet never being disrespectful and being very passionate at this dais, but in other settings in the community. His, I think, persistence and perseverance and his ability to reach out to others, as was mentioned, to get them to rally around a particular issue led to many, many different things that were described here as related to successes that really did, I think, help to tie together and knit together the Parkway and what we have as described as a jewel. And I would just note one other thing that, I think it was actually for more than 30 years, as related to the lawsuit on the East Bay Mud. And, you know, that took a lot of time and effort. There were times, I think, when others might have settled for something less, and Frank made it very clear, along with obviously Sarah and others, that this was not going to be the way that things were going to end up. And so, you know, we can be truly grateful for his efforts. I guess lastly, I would just say that, as commented on, that Steve Green said that, you know, he oftentimes reflects on what would Frank Cyril do. And so maybe the moniker at the new recreation area can be WWFCD, and people can figure it out for themselves what would Frank Cyril do. Nonetheless, this is a tremendous tribute and a legacy to him and his family, but to this community, and I think the board certainly took the right approach here this morning.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So first of all, I'd like to applaud our staff for their diligence and attention to what I think is obviously a very appropriate tribute to someone very special in our community. So I want to express my thanks to Liz and others who helped make this possible. Want to thank those that are in attendance today, and if the family's watching or has a chance to see the telecast later. I want to certainly express the fact that we understand they have other, they have to be with their other family members today, and we appreciate what they're doing. I think the words that were mentioned earlier about being with Doris is the right tribute in Frank's name, and I think he would want that to be the case. So the things that I'm reflecting on today most about this have to do not just with my friendship with Frank, which I blossomed certainly in the course of campaigning for office initially. In fact, it was one of the first meetings, meeting requests I had as a candidate back in 2009, was from Frank to come join him for a great cup of coffee at his River Park home, and we had a great discussion. And he, I left with a binder full of information. But, you know, it was really the first time during the course of my effort to seek the voters' confidence that I had a chance to hear from someone that I knew before, because of course he worked very closely with my late father on issues relative to the Parkway. But he was very giving of his time. He had such a great institutional knowledge about public policy and how it affected the Parkway. And he wanted to have a candidate that was hoping to serve on this board to come in with that understanding. And I just hope that it's apparent to most, that not just me, but others on this board, that the value that we have for the Parkway is a reflection of many things, not the least of which is the fact that we hear from a great advocacy community for our Parkway here in Sacramento, and Frank was really the plow blade of that. And, you know, in addition to our many discussions about public policy in the Parkway, we also had a chance to discuss fly fishing and the best techniques and flies to use for different species of fish in the American River. And so I really developed a very strong bond with Frank, a great amount of respect for him. I can't think of a better way to acknowledge his legacy and his contribution to the community and to this particular asset that is so unique and valuable to us as a region than to have his name grace this recreation area. So I know it was a team effort to get us to this point, and I look forward to the days, weeks, months, and years ahead where we can all go visit that recreation area, enjoy the Parkway, and certainly reflect on the legacy of Frank Cyril.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I won't repeat all the previous accolades, but I met Frank when I first joined this board, and you could always tell when something was really important to Sarah because Frank came down and stayed through the lengthy meetings that we have and got up and spoke. And that showed to me his dedication to the principles of Sarah. He was involved for 49 years. I can't imagine that there are too many people that have their cause and run it for 49 years. I just found that to be amazing. Two other things that stood out to me about his work, one, that he was in the Ironman race for 60 years old and over, which is amazing, good constitution. And the other one that was really important to me is how he worked with East, he worked with us to keep East Bay Mud from taking too much water out of the American River. And that went on for 20 years, and that also shows the dedication, and I think his work really helped Sacramento County fight that battle over the long term and made the situation better. So I think it's very fitting to name this area for Frank, not too far from where he lived, and thank all of you that worked on it to bring it to us today.
Thank you. Well, that concludes our presentations for the renaming of the recreation area, and thank you all for being here and your continued support of the county and the Parkway. We're all, you know, better off because of the work that Frank did, so thank you for being here.
Mr. Chair, if I just could ask on that, and again, assuming maybe the availability of both the children and Doris, and hopefully wishing her a recovery, you know, it would maybe a dedication, I assume there's going to be some dedication in the field, and I think with, you know, some appropriate notice and so forth, that would be great if we could, you know, maybe make sure that occurs.
County Executive will work with park staff.
Thanks.
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go back to item five from the consent calendar. This is the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency Executive Director reporting relationship.
I requested to have a consent. It may be that staff wants to add something, but I know we received some correspondence as recently as late yesterday afternoon on this, but even prior to, and I shared this in my briefing yesterday with the county executive, I expressed some concerns about how this, again, it's properly on the agenda, but what necessitated this proposal. And in my reading, obviously a very brief staff report, somebody had done some work around it, I trust, with staff at the Housing Redevelopment Agency, but I would just say that a couple of things struck me, and maybe I'll speak to the correspondents first, that apparently, I guess, concerns were shared by the city of Sacramento, and in the letter that they wrote to board members yesterday, it was indicated that concerns had been raised and that they had sent a letter, which they attached, to county staff, and that they had asked, and this again was authored by the city attorney Susan Alcala Wood, had asked that their concerns be forwarded to our board and were advised, and again, somebody can correct the record if this isn't correct, were advised that they would not be sharing the city's letter. That, for one, troubles me, that if we have correspondence, and whether it's done in the context of some staff-to-staff work, if there are concerns by our partner, we are joint powers authorities, this has existed for nearly 40 years, that if in fact, this relates to the executive director and all those that are employed under, in this case, in her supervision, but in the supervision of that particular officer of the agency, that our partner, if they shared information they wanted to be, make sure our board had for consideration, and this item is on the agenda today, that troubles me. But nonetheless, I think they raise issues that are pertinent to what we were being asked to do today. Apparently there's some difference as to what reporting to means, but I will just say that, in my view, as a member of this board, but one who, again, like all of us on this board, you know, wears the hat of the housing authority and the county redevelopment agency, that I believe the reporting relationship has been a proper one. If there were concerns about either evaluations or communication or transmittal of information, then I think properly, those certainly either individually or collectively could be taken up with the executive director. But I will also say, and say this very clearly, that I don't believe in the case of this joint powers authority that we need to have a filter for information that would come to this board. And again, that's no slight to our county executive and his office. Again, they do good work and they oversee many different items, but that the Housing Redevelopment Agency and the housing authority of county Sacramento and the city of Sacramento, that relationship is between the two bodies. Obviously, we have legal counsel and executive staff that will recommend and weigh in on any matter that comes before this board. But again, I'm very concerned that what was detailed briefly, so there wasn't a lot of explanation behind it, what didn't really, in my view, bring to bear, if there's some issue that we need to talk about, then that's appropriate for this board, either in this context or in the context of evaluation of the executive director, but that it hasn't been persuasively put forth to me, and certainly in the context of the communication we've received from the city, that this is an action that we ought to take. And so, you know, for that reason, I don't support what's before us, but secondly, I think it's appropriate... think it's appropriate that we have a fuller discussion around this issue. So, I'll leave it with that for right now.
All right, Supervisor Serna.
Thanks. So, and I understand there's probably some folks that want to address the board, so I look forward to hearing from others. And I have to start by expressing my strong agreement with the comments and the rationale that was just expressed by my colleague, Mr. Nantoli. I guess, you know, I have several concerns, not the least of which is that we're being told by a sister agency who's a partner in a JPA that we are getting cherry-picked information in the form of written correspondence, that in itself is troubling, just from a process standpoint. But when I read the background section of the very brief board letter, it says in an effort to best utilize Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency and county organizational capacity and expertise for administration of ongoing programs, that that is the, that's the basis for this. And so I guess I question if this is really to somehow enhance expertise and efficiency of capacity, I don't know who else is more expert, quite frankly, than the professional executive staff of the, of the agency. And so I guess I openly question how having a change in the organizational structure where there is a quote-unquote "reporting" to the CEO, the CEO's office, is actually going to enhance that objective, if that's in truth the objective here. So, I guess I have those two general concerns, is that the process that got us to this point is troublesome for me, and I openly question the need for this in the first place.
Thank you. I'm going to take the public comments, and then we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. First is Cassandra Jennings.
Good morning, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. My name is Cassandra Jennings, and I'm president and CEO of the Greater Sacramento Urban League. I oppose the changes in the reporting of SHRA. The changes in the function of the JPA really diminishes the authority of SHRA. As I recall, the JPA and Joint Powers Authority of the city and county was really designed to really enhance the community services and work together in partnership. I realize that the housing authority and community development is still here, but redevelopment is gone, but there's still a lot of work to do in the community, and I'm out there every day. The Urban League works closely with SHRA, the Housing Authority, and its residents all across this county. Sometimes the residents are units that are under the county housing authority, but they're actually in the city of Sacramento, and sometimes the residents are with the, get the Housing Choice vouchers, old Section Eight, and then they're located throughout, and we're working with them to get them ready for housing and for jobs and for, and to start businesses. SHRA has been able to deliver it effectively and efficiently. This proposed change interrupts and disrupts the communities, the very communities that we serve and work in every day. In fact, I think if anything, and to reflect on the staff report, we should be increasing their authority in really communities that are very vulnerable right now, that we see every day. The message that this sends is that you're devaluing the community and repositioning one of your number-one assets that out there in the community, working every day to make it better. I will agree that communication is important, and as I look around, and I don't get here as often as I should, I know that at least four-fifths of your staff over here can work with, because I communicated with them well when I was in other positions, that their communication can be effective and powerful without changing the reporting requirements. I strongly ask you to not approve this as written, and that to work with the community in order to achieve even better objectives for our community overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Ardell Harrison.
I'm Ardell Harrison. I'm the vice president of the NAACP. Betty Williams was not able to make it, so she prepared a letter for me to read to you guys, and also to give you guys copies of it, so I'll do as I've been instructed. As president of the Great Sacramento NAACP branch, it concerns me that the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting today, County Executive Navdeep Gill will make a calculated and unprecedented attempt to assert the full authority of the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Executive Director LaShiel Dozer by recommending, by consent on an agenda, that the executive director report directly to the county executive instead of the board. SHRA is a joint power created by a resolution of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in the city in 1981, with the JPA agreement executed in 1982. Under the agenda of the JPA, with the regional transit, smud, CETA, and other county, the executive director does not report to a county executive or a city manager. The primary purpose of the JPA is to provide greater efficiency to the county and the city by utilizing common staff to administrate multimillion-dollar federally funded programs and initiative on behalf of the city and county. SHRA serves as the housing staff and housing authority for both entities, serving more than 14,000 low-income families. It is the fifth-largest housing authority in the state. Ms. Dozer has served SHRA executive director since 2008, far longer than any of her predecessors. She is accountable for four key departments, housing development, finance and administration, 18 divisional functions and administrations, the agency 192.7 million-dollar budget for 2019, with the workforce of 236 employees. She also oversees and manages 635 million in capital assets, cash, and loan portfolios. Given Ms. Dozer's leadership and success on behalf of the city and the county of Sacramento, the exposure and respect she has earned at the national level, the intent of relegating her executive directors to a subordinate of a county executive is highly questionable, particularly in the light of the county's dismal lack of diversity at this department's head level. As the highest-ranking African-American female in SHRA, I would hate to think that this is an attempt to minimize her vision, mission, and more importantly, her power. This is not the first time that the county executive has attempted to shackle Ms. Dozer and her agency. In 2017, the county executive, with the support of supervisor Patrick Kennedy, led an unsuccessful attempt to restructure SHRA. This time, Patrick Kennedy is the chairman of the board of supervisor, and it's very concerning that the matter of such reaching implications would be allowed to be present as a consent item. Clearly, this raises transparency and ethical concerns, and the chairman should be held accountable for allowing this recommendation to be present, presented in this manner. The county board of supervisors should consider the serious ramifications of such a drastic, unnecessary, and unprecedented change in the historical reporting relationship between the board and the executive director and the manner in which this recommendation has been printed. This is, this issue should be discussed publicly, and the Greater Sacramento NAACP and many others will be present to express our concerns. We, the NAACP, want this item pulled off the consent calendar and have it available for public discussions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mac Worthy.
People, on this issue, if you look at Channel 14, say, three times out of a week, you heard me speak on this. When I speak on this, too many changes in policy have gone on. I was here when Ann Moore was here. Now, that same time, it's collapsed on the Dozer, this lady that's here now. This is what's happening here when you're playing synagogue and church politics with nonprofits. This is what's happening here. We see some things coming down the line about some money here, and it's at city level, when it should have been changed years and years ago. We got some information and investigation that we're going to turn over, that I'm working with the lady on. Who reported to who? Now, when this thing came in, it was the League of California Cities. Now, who is the mayor of Sacramento? That he was in legislation when the League of California Cities done the millions and millions of dollars of lobbying to take 11% of property tax, which would be their part, for redevelopment. Nobody said a word. I asked about the case that Gerald Brown filed. What was he after? He stole Oakland's money to become governor again. Nobody said a word. I'm trying to show that where things went down here on property in the black neighborhood, nobody said a word but me. How can you rezone my light commercial to residents and never have a real meeting? Tess Cede's wife was out there in their hike. She talks about taking the fellow, what they done is take the fellow investigation clause out. That's how they done that. This has been a twist at city level, and when you play the numbers they played from the board of education and who you got on these boards, this is what you will wind up with. Too much money going out to nonprofit organizations, and the real people not understanding what is going out here.
Could you wrap up, Mr. Worthy?
Yeah, you can't, you can't have housing overlap education. Housing and education is two different things. You allowing many welfare set up within the housing when the housing should be restricted to housing and not to education.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's the final card I have from the public. Is there any others in the audience that would like to address this issue? Okay, then we will bring it back to the board. Is there comments from the board? Okay. I will, I will make a comment. First of all, it's unfortunate the personalization that's occurred, because this isn't about, in my mind, any individual, whether they're sitting up here or in the audience. This is about, in my mind, accountability and government accountability and transparency. The comparison has been made of SHRA as a JPA with other JPAs that we all sit on, solid waste authorities, transportation authority, regional sanitation, and the list goes on and on. Tremendous difference between this organization and those organizations. One is, they meet about 10 times a year, some more. SHRA's JPA has met, to my knowledge, once in 30 years, and it was very, very difficult to get that meeting, I know, because, as was said, I was largely a proponent of having a JPA meeting. Because if the JPA doesn't meet, where's the accountability? We are ultimately, as members of the JPA, responsible for the management of the organization, ultimately. That can't happen if they don't meet regularly, and I don't, and I have not seen a way of getting those regular meetings to take place. I believe that we are left too often in the dark of what's going on at SHRA as a board. I can't speak for my colleagues necessarily, but I will say that I feel that way as someone who represents an area that is probably as impacted as any other area by the work of SHRA. There's been very difficult times I've had at being able to, for lack of a better phrase, manage the responsibilities that I have as a member of the JPA. Recently, it was very, very difficult, and we're still having the ongoing discussions and, and issues on Stockton Boulevard and a SHRA and successor agency property that was the home of a homeless encampment. It wasn't until I pushed very hard on our county staff to get involved that the situation became better, and it's still not ideal by any means, any stretch of the imagination. There have been other instances within District 2 in which it's been very difficult, as me, responsible ultimately for the people that live in District 2, to get properties cleaned up where there was mold. It took months and months to get anything done. We had people living in dangerous situations where their health was at risk, and even worse, allegations that could be more serious than that. That's not the kind of accountability that I expect of myself and that my constituents expect of me. And that's why, this has nothing to do with Ms. Dozer, who I think she and I have a fine relationship, and I have said on many occasions very publicly, I respect the work that Ms. Dozer does. It's not about Ms. Dozer. This is about my role as being responsible to the constituents and the people of Sacramento County, and specifically District 2. I think that this reporting will make it more easy for us as board members to have input on the way SHRA is managed and the way that it serves the community. And that's why I have been a proponent of this. It's not taking away authority, it's not a power grab, it's not changing the structure of the JPA, it's strictly providing greater access to the people who live in District 2, to what happens, and the other districts in the county, to what happens in county SHRA projects. So, that's why I will support this motion today. Any other comments?
I'd like to hear from county council.
Okay, I'm sorry, but Supervisor Frost.
Oh, sorry.
I didn't see Supervisor Frost.
I did have a conversation with county council, and it might be appropriate to hear from county council before I comment, if you would, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and board members. This is a very narrow issue, in my opinion, in my review, and it does not change the role, responsibility, or requirements of the executive director of SHRA. If I can just briefly address the issue of providing information to the board and what is contained in the letter from the city attorney, there'd been no contact directly with me and the city attorney, it was one of the deputy attorneys, and a discussion that took place on Friday. And my communication at that point was really willingness to discuss and an indication that my view, my opinion, my research indicates that this does not impact in any way the JPA itself. It was an internal reporting procedure that the, this board maintains authority to decide. And I'd be happy to talk, but that this was, I wasn't going to change that opinion, and I'd be open to seeing any legal authority that they wanted to provide. Later that day, I received a meeting invite that was to meet with the city attorney and the attorney for SHRA, and attached to that was a letter to me, directed to me, which you have seen, that's been provided, and it was asking me, as county council, to communicate to you, the board, what the city attorney's opinion was. This was already an agendized matter, so I called that line counsel, the deputy city attorney that I'd spoken with originally, and asked about the meeting. I'd be more than willing to meet, I'm happy to meet on, on Monday, but that I didn't see it as my role to communicate their disagreement with my opinion, that they, they know very well how to do that. And this was an agendized meeting, it's a public meeting, and that they could communicate that, and very clearly, they know how to do that, because you did receive a letter from the city attorney indicating what their position was. There was no intent to keep information from the board by any means, I didn't see it as my role to communicate the city attorney's legal opinion. That meeting for Monday was canceled with no comment, with no communication to me. I would have been more than happy to discuss with the city attorney what her questions were, and to be willing, I did speak with Mr. Lambin, the attorney for SHRA. We respectfully disagreed. We respectfully disagreed, and you've seen his letter. But that certainly was in no way trying to keep information from the board. And I hope you understand that. It was my view that, given that this was already agendized, it was a public meeting, that they were certainly capable of providing their opinion to this board at that time.
So I'll just make some quick comments. And number one, there were some comments, public comments, that indicated this is unprecedented. I don't believe it's unprecedented. I do think there are other jurisdictions who have their housing authority report to the county executive and not, you know, or keep the county executive in the communications. My understanding, based on my conversation with county council, is that this does not usurp LaChelle's authority. It doesn't disrupt access to the board. She can still meet with the board. It doesn't violate the JPA agreement. And it really, in my view, it is an attempt for us to try to improve communications. And a lot of times, you may not realize it, but there's five of us going in different directions, and one person can have a conversation, and we may not all be in that conversation. But when there's a conversation with the county executive, he brings us all into, keeps us in the know about his activities. And so, in my point, in my view, this will help improve communications that apparently have been challenged over time. And for that reason, I'm going to support this.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate certainly county council's explanation and as the events, and certainly as you saw them roll out. We didn't have the benefit, obviously you've reviewed, we had no benefit of any legal opinion. Obviously, you weighed in, you or your office on this. That's the normal review process we have here. I guess I would just say, though, to that, that if someone transmits information, ask if that could be shared with the board, you know, whether it's blessed by you or not. I mean, that's a very reasonable thing to do because what it does require, then they write a separate letter, attach the information of communication. That's more procedural than not. I'm not going to argue over that as to, you know, why you, you know, you chose to do it and explain that. I guess I want to bring this back, though, to the point that's being made here. And that is, is that what is reporting? Reporting to? Yeah, I'll tell you what I think that means. It's not just communicating and telling the county exec that, you know, the agency's working on this or that. It means that, and I used the word earlier, it's filtering, it's channeling, because that means everything goes through the executive's office. And then, again, this is not personalized to Nav or Rob or LaChelle. That's what that means. Reporting to means you report to. And that if we have a normal structure in this county as relates to department heads, which report to, that's the structure we use, all those staff reports, they all come through the executive's office, are reviewed and agendized. That's different than more communication. And I think the accountability is there, I'll just say that. If, you know, and I can appreciate frustration and situations that are described by the chair and maybe by others on this board. But if those are issues, then whether the JPA board meets in its entirety or we as a board have the ability to meet with the executive director, we can even do that in closed session. I don't know that we've done an evaluation or a performance. I think, knowing LaChelle in this case, she's always been very willing to do that. And if we have concerns about that, then we ought to do that, not just individually but collectively. Because we operate as a board in our leadership roles in this, in this county. But I will say that I think this is more than just improving communications. I think this is a restructuring in the way that it will require reporting up through a chain of command and through certainly the executive, but deputy executive officers. And that does, that's a big change. That's a change that is more than just better communication or better accountability. And so, for those reasons alone, let alone, I think, having a broader public discussion about what it is our concerns are, how we might deal with that in the context of the executive director and our role both as members of board supervisors and directors on the county housing authority and what remains of any redevelopment portions of that, and certainly with the JPA. And again, I concur. If the JPA wanted to meet more frequently, that's not a task that's without certainly a lot of challenges, but nonetheless, we could do that. But for this to be, I think it's couched in a very simplified fashion, but I think the implications are far greater than what is being revealed here today. And I would be willing to bet that if we take this action, it changes significantly the reporting structure and the information flow and the scheduling of agenda items and the accountability. And that may be seen in some folks' eyes as being better or worse. But I think this is a significant change, and I'm not just going to sit here and wordsmith it and kind of be placated by the fact that, well, this is very simple. I think it changes the relationship between this board, future boards, and executive director currently and future executive directors. If that's what this board wants, then we're certainly, I guess, able to do that under the legal advice that we receive here today. But I do not intend to support this. I think we ought to drop this item if we want to form a board committee to work with our city council members and/or have our county executive with the, working with the city manager and executive director of SHRA. That would be an approach that certainly would be acceptable, but I don't intend to support. I think this changes significantly and believe this is, you know, this is a milestone moment for the agency.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I guess I'll just put a little finer point on some of the comments that Supervisor Nattoli just shared. First of all, our county council said that you don't see it as your role to share the city attorney's position. And I guess I just respectfully but forcefully disagree with that. Because when you're talking about the JPA and you have a sister jurisdiction as part of that JPA, and there's communication about something as important as this, and then judgment is applied and it's not shared with us, that raises, raises red flags for me, quite frankly. I don't know what harm is done by sharing information. In fact, it seems to me that that is kind of part and parcel of the duty of county council. So I just disagree with the council's comment about that. As to reporting and what that means, we received another communication from SHRA's attorney about that very subject. And maybe, maybe this is semantics, I don't know. But without clarification and a clear definition of reporting as enhanced communication versus adjusting the hierarchy of executive administration and decision-making, I am certainly not prepared to support the motion today. And I would agree with Supervisor Nattoli if, you know, there's a will on this board to take a deep breath and perhaps, you know, whether it's a committee or having a deeper dive on what reporting actually means and coming back to the board, fine. But as is, as it's been teed up today, which I think is, quite frankly, to be very honest, extremely sloppy, I'm not willing to support it.
Okay, that's Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I found this conversation confusing from the standpoint of we're talking about things that aren't really at issue. The city attorney certainly knows how to communicate with the board members. I got four copies of this letter, so I know they know how to communicate with us. And to have discussion hinge somewhat on that is odd, in my mind. And I think that the letter that was written was, left out some key facts and perhaps changed them. So from that standpoint, I don't agree with the letter that was written. The city certainly knows how to communicate directly with us. The difficulty I've always had with SHRA is the lack of oversight. And I've always had a great relationship with SHRA. I understand some have not. It probably depends on what district you represent and whether the things that need to get done, get done. But the organization, in my view, is somewhat opaque. And this is not about individuals, it's about trying to make the agency a better place. And I think we would get more action that was desired by the board of supervisors in our districts if we had that relationship of who it reports to go to the county executive. So that being said, I'm sympathetic to the comment that maybe there hasn't been enough public discussion or discussion with, yeah, public discussion, I'll just call it that. So Patrick, would you be open to continuing this for a more discussion?
It's not my preference, but I would be open to it, yes. I mean, I just to address that, I guess, that we have been talking about this for a couple of years at least. I mean, there has been, you know, quite a bit of discussion about this. I don't know, I don't know what it changes.
Yeah.
I think we'll be in the same place. And that's.
Yeah, I agree. But I think part of the objection today seems to be on, I'd like the discuss, I'd like the decision that is made not to be accused of having been open enough.
That's fair.
And since this seems to have an overriding view that the city attorney is, about the city attorney, I don't, I don't think that adds anything to the discussion. So if I, that's what I would suggest, is that we put it off for a couple of weeks and have a more nuanced discussion.
Is that a motion?
Sure, that's a motion.
Chair will second. We have a motion in a second to continue for when?
We can, for a couple of weeks, we would be out at May 21st.
May 21st.
I mean, I'm sorry, that's one week. I'm sorry, the next meeting would be June 4th.
Is there time on the agenda? We can.
Can we just not give a time right now?
That's fine.
Yeah, I guess I would ask county council, you know, do you think you can get the city attorney to return a phone call and have a discussion, one-on-one, and then possibly have more discussion with interested parties?
I'm confident that could happen.
Okay, all right. So.
Before we vote, Supervisor Nattoli.
Yes, since it looks like we're to continue this, I think some better understanding for the purpose, and I appreciate the comments by Supervisor Peters relative to public discussion on this, have some better understanding what report to means. And again, at least as Mr. Leonard and Mr. Gill see that, and certainly as our county council sees that. Because, again, you know, what does that mean? What does that mean in practical terms? What does it mean procedurally? Because, again, I was pretty emphatic on what I think it means, but maybe a difference on that. But I would like to, when this comes back, to have a more robust staff report that really lays out what that means and doesn't just reference a section out of the JPA and then says, you know, there's no fiscal impacts and that it doesn't change anything. Because I'm not convinced that it doesn't. I think it changes things significantly. And so I want to know that. I want, I want the public to know what it is that we think this does relative to the relationship and accountability and processing and all the things that, again, I think are embedded in that discussion. And so I think that's what needs to be in a report that comes back. And if June 4th is too soon for that, I would suggest that we're going to be right in the budget, to your question, Mr. Chair, about agendas. Again, it doesn't have to be put off indefinitely, but I would think that we want to give this adequate time to make sure that we have that information for our consideration, but certainly for the public's consideration. So I might suggest we might go a little longer on the continuance. Thanks.
Supervisor Peters.
Just, I agree that we, the question has been brought up about what reports to means, and I think that needs to be laid out. And, you know, if there would be any different meeting status and that kind of thing, a little more work on the staff report. So I'd include that in my motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second.
And, oh, I'm sorry. And I think it's going to take longer than June, whatever it was, maybe the.
I'd like to shoot for June 4th.
Oh, okay, all right.
And, you know, if it comes back that it just wasn't enough time, then.
Okay.
We'll appropriately.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Item 37 is the public hearing on the benefit category change and levy of increased service charges for the Parkside Village subdivision within Zone 1 of County Service Area Number 1.
Good morning, members of the board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a senior civil engineer with the County Engineering Division. And I'm here to present the item as just was read into the record by the clerk. The Parkside Village subdivision is located along Waterman Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of Florin Road between Elk Grove, Florin, and Bradshaw Roads. The subdivision proposes 95 residential lots with a neighborhood park. In response to a rezone condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the benefit category change process for County Service Area Number 1, which provides street and safety light services. Therefore, a notice and a ballot were mailed to the property owner on March 28th. This item proposes a change from the safety light only category, which currently has an annual service charge of $2.56, to the enhanced street and safety light category, which has an annual residential service charge of $47.96. So if there are no questions for your, from the, from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider testimony, objections, and protests, close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Are there any questions from the board? Then we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. And so give the direction.
Okay, we've received one ballot from the legal owner, family real property LP, parcel number 0660070056, site address Florin Road, Sacramento, California, 95829. And the vote is yes, in favor of the proposed change.
Thank you very much.
We have no protests, therefore, is there a motion?
Yeah, okay. Do we need to read anything else into the record?
Yes, thank you very much, Supervisor Nattoli. In the resolution, there are a couple of fill-ins that I can read into the record. Section 2 states that at the close of the hearing, the board had received no written protests. There are written protests which the board finds and determines to not constitute a majority protest. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the change of benefit category, and 0% was in opposition. And with that, I ask that you, board, adopt the resolution.
Okay, so move, Mr. Chair.
All right, that's a second.
Thank you.
Motion, second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For item 38, I do need a motion to drop this item. This is the North Vineyard Station Specific Plan Development Impact Fee Program 2019 Update.
Is there a motion?
So when we drop this, when do we anticipate it to come back?
It could be as much as two to three months, Supervisor Nattoli. There's a revision that's been requested of the financing plan for additional infrastructure to be added to that, and we're in the process of doing.
Additional what?
Additional infrastructure to be added to the, to that particular financing plan. And as such, it'll need to be looked at what the infrastructure is, as well as outreach one more time with it, and then completion of that revised financing plan.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Chair, just on that mic, then we have item 39, which is the follow-on item. And I know there was some integration that was trying to be achieved between the financing plans and the infrastructure plans and so forth. So does the continuance or dropping this item for several months to look at whatever, you know, will be either included or brought forward for our consideration, does that in any way affect what's before us on item 39?
It does not, Supervisor Nattoli.
Okay. All right, then I would move we drop item 38 and look forward to getting it back in 60, 90 days, I guess.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 39 is the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program Implementation Item 39 is the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program implementation, the environmental determination is exempt, it's also the approval of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program and the new Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule. You are also introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the Establishment of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption. You're also introducing a second ordinance amending Chapter 16.83, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code, revising the Vineyard Fee Program boundaries, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption.
Kamal Atwal with the Special Districts, I'm a senior civil engineer in this section, I'll be presenting this item today. These were the recommended actions that were read into the record. Background on the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, this plan was approved in December of 2010, and with the approval of the plan, there was a public facilities financing plan that was prepared that identified the infrastructure needs, and also the existing programs that were in place at the time, and also proposed, the proposed programs that goes with the approval. The area currently contains 3,872 acres, it's anticipated to have 8,000, over 8,000 residential units, which include single-family and multifamily, and 322 acres of non-residential uses, which has industrial, office, and commercial. Today's presentation, county staff has been working on the fee program implementation effort to implement the funding mechanism identified in the financing plan. The fee program effort was coordinated with the Florin Vineyard stakeholders, county departments, regional transit, and South Gate Recreational Park District. The proposed fee program includes funding for roadway, park, and transit facilities, and the fee program, NEXA study was prepared by the county consultants, and burden of the infrastructure cost is spread among the development in the Florin Vineyard Community Plan area. This is the boundary and the, for the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, to the north is Elder Creek, it wraps around the North Vineyard Station Community Plan, and north-south roadways are South Watt, Elk Grove Florin, and on the east side, north-south roadway is Bradshaw Road. Florin Road goes east-west, Elder Creek, and then Gerber Road. These are, that's the map for the program facilities and the roadway component of the CIP. We're widening Elk Grove Florin, South Watt, to six lanes within the plan, as well as going up north to Kefir Road. Bradshaw Road within the plan allowed planned furnages, as well as off-site going north to Kefir Road to six lanes, and Elder Creek, same thing, onsite, six lanes, and Florin Road within the plan, it's six lanes along the project boundaries and within the project, and west of the plan, we're going to six lanes up to Florin Perkins.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just a question before you leave the, the slide there, so on Elder Creek, you show the, I guess, the six-lane section, but you also show, looks like it go, it goes down to four lanes, west of Bradshaw for a segment, I guess to Waterman there, and then also, again, slides back down as you get closer to South Watt, is that correct?
Yeah, that is correct, because the plan area doesn't front on that side, so there's no frontage for the plan area, that's why the frontage lane is not in there. It will be included in the West Jackson plans, because that, that plan area belongs to that area.
Okay, so how do you avoid the sawtooth approach, then? And maybe you anticipated that question from me, but that, you know, we work very, very hard to not, if we're going to do logical segments, whether they be two-lane segments or four-lane segments, or ultimately six lanes, they usually build out that outside lane as for the development, but how do you avoid that? So, assuming you had that level of development along Elder Creek, that you don't, you know, you, you compress down to the older two-lane section, because that's all you got on the north side right now, you basically have a two-lane road. So, what do we use to guard against that? West Jackson is still somewhere off in the distance, and we haven't even seen the development plans, let alone the financing plan, that would follow behind that. So, what's the answer, should we see the necessity to widen that road in advance of a West Jackson financing plan? I'm sure West Jackson will have its own set of priorities, and I'm not so sure Elder Creek's going to be at the top of the list, so how do, how do we address that?
The Florin Vineyard Community Plan area, I believe, doesn't have the mitigation to do six lanes, it's, they have a condition of approval to do six lanes along their project furnages, so that's why that segment that is offsite to the community plan is not included as the outside travel lane, but it is captured in the SETDF Regional Program, so if there is a need, that county can step in and fix that issue. Yeah, Mike?
Supervisor, there is, there's a nuance that's built into your question, obviously. And so, within the plan area, the logical segment issue is addressed, it's, it's conditioned a certain way, and really what's being highlighted here is that we're on the boundary of a, of the plan area that doesn't have the obligation of the plan area to build that north side, is basically, and, and as such, this particular action today won't provide any guarantee about the delivery of that outside lane, as well as how that'll get managed through a logical segment piece. I think fundamentally, that's what's there.
Okay.
When other plan areas come in, or other traffic impacts hit that road, then we'd be having to look to those funding sources as implementing that outside lane, that whole segment, so.
But, but four lanes is provided for?
That's correct, yeah, that's, and that's what this plan area's obligation is, so it is unique, these boundary conditions do present, over time, some unique considerations that we're going to have to potentially address, depending upon the development pattern.
Okay, the other thing is, is you have smaller fronting properties west of Bradshaw on Elder Creek, you know, again, so they might be part of a Jackson plan area, but, you know, there are people's homes that are there, and, you know, that, that doesn't happen overnight, a lot of folks continue to stay there, so the ability to build out that outside lane, should it be needed, obviously doesn't occur if you have the financing plan.
Understood, and as such, it could come back to the, the county-wide Transportation Development Fee Program, which is what Kamal referenced, as another option to deal with that in the future.
Okay, just one other question if I could, real quickly, so then on the Gerber, Gerber piece, where we, again, I think certainly credit to Bob Davison and Water Resources, and Mike, you were Director of Transportation at the time, we put the center meeting in the right location for future widening of Gerber Road, and certainly as my colleagues, Supervisor Kennedy and Serna know, we're seeing increased traffic movement along that segment. What is the approach here? Because, again, that, that borders on another, another district as well, so how do we make sure that Gerber Road gets done? Because it's not in a four-lane configuration, certainly all the way across there, and you've got smaller fronting properties.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay.
So, that's part of the North Vineyard Finance Plan area, is that's right?
Yes.
And so, when that plan finally gets adopted, which it'll be back soon, that'll be the other plan that we'll be needing to be look at, looking at, its prioritization and its implementation for that.
Okay, so just let me understand, that was kind of my earlier question about continuing last item, so the coordination is there in the plan elements, you're looking at doing some other work around the item we just dropped, but from the standpoint of Gerber Road, and what it means to a logical, not just logical segment, but logical build-out, meeting traffic demands, and, you know, congestion in the area and so forth, that's, that's all coordinated? Because, I mean, that was one of the things I thought we might see with these documents, is how, you know, all those things integrate, because you've, you've modified on the financing plans, if I recall correctly, you know, you had big segments, because some plans would be for others, and now you're trying to true that up, and make sure the fees are reflective of what's needed, but also that the, the segments get built, and that the assimilation of money and accumulation of money meets the capital improvement program, and obviously adjusts itself to other traffic patterns that may develop accidents or otherwise, that we need to address more immediately than was anticipated in the plan. So, that's, that's all being integrated, then?
That's correct.
Okay, so Vineyard Springs, North Vineyard Station, Florin Vineyard Gap.
Yes, and primarily what's happening is the obligations for those various, that various infrastructure is being put into those various financing plans, right? And then to the extent that we have the ability to coordinate and collect money in each one of those plans, and deliver those things in a, in a consistent, logical manner is what we're going to try to achieve. We, what we haven't done is we haven't consolidated all the plans into one overall plan, where you could then say, we're going to require that, that the money is available, that's in the whole plan, that will be put into an individual segment, that's part of the nature, the way these were approved, but in terms of the coordination, it has been, it has been done through.
Okay, maybe offline a briefing at some juncture, not immediately, but to kind of get a, be a very clear understanding, particularly in light of North Vineyard coming back at a later date, so, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Continue, please.
Yeah, continuing, so we have intersection improvements, onsite traffic signals, there's a various onsite pedestrian signals, there are some signals that are in the park CFP as well, these are shown here, we've got railroad crossings, and major drainage crossings are programmed, as well as the, the light blue dash line is the fair share improvements for the City of Sacramento are included. So, park improvements, has 107 acres of basic park improvements, 36 playgrounds, soccer fields, various baseball fields, tennis courts, and basketball courts, we've got shade structures, restroom buildings and parking lots, there's a community center on a four-acre site, have 5.3 miles of trails along open space, and four pedestrian signals that I showed you on the previous slide, and 13.6 acres along minor roadways, and there's some trail and trailside improvements along joint-use detention basins. Going to the next slide, transit improvements programmed in the Florin Vineyard Community Plan are half-acre park and ride lot, which will provide 50 spaces, we got five interim bus stops, and then the rest of the facilities are programmed in the Sacramento County Regional Transportation Fee, which has buses and bus maintenance facilities. Here's the summary of the components, with the total cost for each component, roadway and frontage is $165 million and some change, other jurisdictional fair share that goes to the City of Sacramento is $6.5 million, parks are 7.7 million, 75.7 million dollars, transit is $561,010, and 4% administration cost. The total CIP combined for those four components, we're looking at $248 million, and some of these facilities, they overlap with the Sacramento County Regional Transportation Development Fees, and these are regional roadways and trails, and the Florin Vineyard Community Plan will receive appropriate credit for the overlapping facilities. Here's the DUE rate for the, each of the component, the total fee for the, including the administration, is we're looking at 28,235 per DUE, when you sum all those up, that doesn't include SETDF, I'll show you that on the next slide. These fees are collected at the building permit issuance, every March, we'll adjust these to ENR's CCI, Construction Cost Index, and then the program is designed to be updated every five years to account for any changes in land use and cost changes. Here's the sample calculation for a couple of different project types, we have RD5, RD20, and LC. RD5, we're looking at 26,625 for a single-family per unit rate, RD20 would be 17,889, and then LC for commercial is $29.55.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Maybe I'm going to interrupt your flow here, but, and maybe it's on a next slide to come, but what do we know about these adjustments relative to the, to the totality of all fees that are paid?
I'll show you at the end of the slide.
That's right.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We'll get to those discussions, let me just walk through what we have.
Supervisor Natale.
Yeah, just before you leave that slide as well, and it references your previous slide as well, so the other jurisdictional costs, and so that's with the City of Sacramento, so are we funding downstream improvements, for example, on Fruit Ridge or Elder Creek, west side of South Watt? What is it that, for 6.5 million, you can't buy very much for that, but what is that fund?
So, it's a fair share improvements to various handful of, I can go back to the map here real quick, it has roadway segment widening, as well as the intersections, I haven't.
Those aqua, the ones in Aqua Coast?
Yeah, so it's along those segments, there's some railroad crossings as well, so the Florin Vineyard Community Plan is paying a fair share towards those, and it's basically collected in our program and transferred over, once we have an operational agreement with the City of Sacramento.
You said, once we have an operational agreement, because I know we talked about this in our general plan discussions nearly 10 years ago, about how we would, you know, work inter-jurisdictionally with, you know, impacts, and likewise, are they taking us into account on their, you know, they have a lot of industrial, employment-driven development, a lot of that's existing, so is that working both ways? And we say an operational agreement, are we close to an operational agreement with them?
We have MOU with them, but there is an operational agreement that will come after this program is adopted, and we'll work with the City of Sacramento, as well as DOT, to bring that forward.
Yeah, at least process-wise, he's identified where we are with it. We've yet to have, I think, a substantially reliable discussion with the City of Sacramento about formalizing that agreement, the operational agreement, there's, there's a concept is understood, but in terms of actually engaging and, and working out the final parts of that operational agreement, we haven't made a lot of progress on that.
Okay, well, again, and then maybe that's something we, as a board, ought to initiate, either formal communications to them, because I think it's important, we're recognizing that, obviously, in our development, likewise, they should in theirs, and I think we, during our general plan discussions some years ago, we did talk about, you know, with Elk Grove and Ranch Cordova likewise, that if we impact those city jurisdictions with, you know, traffic via development that's approved in the county, for streets that, you know, motorists, you know, they pretty much care what, you know, where they're driving through, as long as it, you know, they can get through, you know, in a reasonable amount of time, and, you know, safely, so have we got any operational agreements with, you know, Folsom, Ranch Cordova, Elk Grove, or City of Sac?
We have one with Rancher Cordova.
Okay.
That's the first group that we have one with.
All right, well, I do think it's important, again, I know you have full plates, but I, that to me is important, because as, as we see growth continuing in these regions where we come right up against one another to acknowledge, and I think certainly we're doing our part with this, and I think it's important that we continue to press our colleagues in other jurisdictions to take into account when their development impacts upstream or downstream traffic, and our, our respective jurisdiction as well, so, okay, thanks.
Thank you. The slide shows the overlapping facilities between the Florin Vineyard Community Plan, as well as the SETDF, so there's about 146 million dollars of roadway improvements that overlap with the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee, and then 2.5, or close to 2.6 million dollars in trailside improvements. So, the total fee credit that will overlap per DUE is 15,000, and then District 4 rate is 17,000, some change, and plan area will pay a reduced SETDF fee at $2,377.33. Going to the next slide, I'm summing up the Florin Vineyard Community Plan fee, and the SETDF and its components, and transit component and admin part of it, adding all those up, we're at $32,111.58. This includes all the SETDF and the Florin Vineyard, four components, and the administration cost. Our intent is to, in the ordinance, is.
And Supervisor Serna.
So, thank you, so, back, back to my earlier question, this is, this is the, these are all the fees for capital improvements, right?
Yes.
So, my question is, what are all the fees for capital improvements, and what are then all the impact fees together? That's what I mean by the totality of.
I do have a slide for that, I can.
Well, I looked ahead and I didn't see it, so.
Okay, it's, it's actually a hard copy, I, we can give you an example of a residential project, as well as a retail project.
The reason I'm asking is I want to understand kind of the total burden, that's the way it's going to be looked at by residential developer when they build their pro formas, to understand the total, the total fee load, and what, what that does to the feasibility of projects.
It doesn't count water agency, or sanitation district, I mean, all those are over and above.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, these numbers don't have that, but I have that information here, if I can get a projector.
Okay.
And I think maybe one clarifying point is that the analysis of a total fee load, which is what we're now coming to, is, is not really driven by the specific finance plan adoption and approval, except if you said the total load. plan adoption and approval, except if you said the total load needs to be modified in some way and that we would use the plan area as one of the adjusting factors, right?
I understand.
Yeah, that's all.
So that's, that's the typical load for a single family prototype and RD5, a size of a 2,200 square feet home in various different areas within Sacramento as well as Placso County and City of Roseville.
So about $90,000?
Yes. So Foreman Vineyard, we are a little over 80, but it's less than the other plan area, like a North Vineyard station.
When you show us charts like this, it'd all be, would always be helpful if you have a line that shows the mean.
Or probably mean is somewhere around 70 plus.
We're a little above?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's, excuse me, so that's everything? If you went to pull a building permit for a 2,200 square foot home, what you would put down on the table for that permit, a single permit, would be $85,000?
Yeah, that's all the fees, including the, even the services tax that property owner pays every year.
So county service area 10, county service area 1, all that's built in?
Yeah, everything is built in, yes.
Yeah, schools, schools in here?
School fees, everything, yeah.
School fees, sewer, water, all the permit fees you put.
One thing we do like to caution in sharing this, it's always an interesting point, you know, of reference, is that we can't always guarantee that we have apples to apples from one jurisdiction to another. Greenbrier is an example of that here. And so depending upon how the projects are approved and how they're conditioned and what's being built, either through a finance plan or not, that, those numbers can vary a little bit. But this is a touch point, at least, to sort of see what do we think we're seeing generally across the region.
Does it include HCP, Capital Conservation Plan?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. So it's, that's a total full package, all the fees that we know about today?
Yes.
Yes.
Going back to my first slide, can I get my slides back? So recommended actions are recognize the exempt status of the project pursuant to the CEQA Guidelines, Section 15273A. Open a public hearing to establish the Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees. Do we have any comments?
Are there any questions before we open the public hearing? No. Then with that, we will open the public hearing. I have no speaker slips, but if there's anybody in the public that would like to address this issue, please come forward now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Thank you. So basically, action number four, we're looking at adopt the attached resolution approving the Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee, resolution number one. And then adopt the attached resolution approving the Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule for Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Area. That's the resolution number two. And number six action is introduce an ordinance adding a chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of Sacramento County Code relating to the establishment of development impact fees to finance the cost of public facilities within the Foreman Vineyard Community Plan Area. Way full reading and continue to, continue the ordinance to May 21st for adoption. And number seven, introduce the ordinance number two, amending the chapter 16.83 Title 16, of the Title 16 of Sacramento County Code revising the boundaries of Vineyard Fee Program, Vineyard Public Facilities Financing Plan Development Impact Fee Program Area. Way full reading, continue the ordinance to May 21st for adoption.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, I'm prepared to move the items, Chair, but I just wanted to ask a brief question as it relates to both police services and maintenance that, on the roadways. I know that as we've talked, you know, in many workshops over recent months, in this forum and others, that, you know, we build in what it takes to build the infrastructure, but then there's really no component as it relates to the fee structure. It's dependent upon, obviously, the other streams of funding for the maintenance of that infrastructure, which goes in new, it has a life of 20, 30, 40 years, depending upon how far we stretch it. But I can tell you, for example, in some of the vineyard areas and elsewhere, that if we aren't able to, as you've delineated, get to those areas with some level of maintenance and we put some general fund dollars towards that in recent years, then we, you know, we end up, you know, shorting all the folks, including the future homeowners and businesses in those areas, because the road infrastructure doesn't have any component for, you know, what happens in the future. And I'm not suggesting we do that with today's discussion, obviously, and that's, you know, that's a bigger discussion. But I would just say that there are some jurisdictions have dealt with that. And I, it would seem to me that as we're looking at, you know, what it costs to put the roads in, to, you know, put all the landscape meetings and stuff, we, you put in for the landscape maintenance, you're working in this case with South Gate in large part, or, you know, or with other entities, but you don't build any component in for the road. And of course, people pay gas taxes, we pay other property taxes, you know, that supposedly cover that. But I think what we've seen, certainly over the course of many decades now, it doesn't. And that's an asset, it's a public asset. And so, Mike, I know that, you know, you've looked at this, and I guess I just would, you know, offer that for a point of discussion. It obviously goes to that total package load there, which is borne by the new homeowner, borne by the development. And, and I get that, but if, if there's no prospect in, you know, in a lifetime that we're going to see our way clear on road maintenance as we look at it with nothing new added, then I think it certainly bears at least some discussion before this board as to how we address that and, you know, or through the development standards. But over the years, we've evolved that development standard so that you have a bigger pavement section, that's more cost loaded on and so forth, and you get more, you know, you get more wearability out of the durability, excuse me. But it doesn't last forever. And so, I don't know, again, I don't want to get sidetracked here this morning, but I would just offer that because I think it's, you know, something that we ought to at least have a discussion about, because you take care of it with landscape corridors and with some of the streetlight maintenance and so forth, and even though that may fall short, it's a contributing factor. And, and I guess I would just offer that, and I don't know if there are any comments, Mike, you've worked on this for many years, but other jurisdictions have built that in. I know that a couple of our city, you know, cities within the county actually had that as a component of their development, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That's correct. So just as a clarifying component here, when, when these plans were approved, that sort of obligation and responsibility was not really identified in those plan approvals. So for some sort of ongoing maintenance activity as it relates to the road systems, we'd have to have a separate process, and I think you understand that. And it is something that the, the community, we could consider for the community to, to basically adopt or approve. But what I did want to highlight is that the new plan areas that are coming forward, that is a part of the analysis that we are now doing, is an obligation there. So some of this is sort of temporally, you know, affected some, some things that were done many years ago as opposed to what we're doing now.
Okay. All right, that's good to know. The other piece of the question was on the police services, you know, that NEXUS study was done probably 15 years ago now, if not even longer, maybe getting closer 20 years now. And I think it has a bit of a factor there. It's, it's not done at the time, obviously, development, it goes forward. But when I look at the, you know, costs of providing for law enforcement in an incorporated area, the, you know, that component, it's, you know, it's not, it's not minor, it's a few hundred dollars a year. And the idea was is to maintain, you know, a static level of patrol and police services in those new areas based upon the burden they bring to, to that overall effort. And I don't know if there's any examination that's required after a certain juncture, you know, after a couple of decades, do you look at that and what that means? Again, it gets borne by homeowners, some pay it and a lot don't, because it was, you know, a fairly new iteration in, in the development package. But I just, I asked that question, I don't bother you.
Yeah, so this development is one of the developments that was conditioned to participate in the Police CFD. The Police CFD is recommended for any new subdivision in the county, creating five lots or more. So, so with that, it participates with a special tax that when it was mutually implemented was about $300 per parcel and it has since been escalated by the, by the CPI. So, so it's an absolute requirement of this development to, to annex to the Police CFD and that certainly it does provide funding for a share of its, the police services provided to this development.
And I would just note that I think it's important from a standpoint, we talked today about accountability, that, you know, one, and I know, you know, NAV has responded to this, make sure that every year in the budget, that we show what that number is, that it goes towards the sheriff's budget. But I think in meeting, meeting, you know, the premise that it was adopted by, that we would have some level of service delivery in those areas, you know, because it's an overall contributing factor to that. I do think as, as that contribution grows in development throughout the county, but certainly in the southern part of the, the county, that not so much even the tax and what the number is, but what comes in, that there's some accountability via certainly our budgeting process with the sheriff as to how, because I think otherwise it subjects us to challenge at some future date, that, you know, you collect this from me over here for $400 a year and yet this board will debate year to year its budget and what that means to patrol services and any other services in those neighborhoods. There was a nexus, it was fairly flexible, as I recall, but I do think that that needs to be a point, because we're making, you know, I think it's upwards of a couple million dollars a year now that go to sheriff's budget, is that correct?
That's correct. I don't know the exact amount, I can certainly review that amount and--
Okay. Well, again, it's all over the county, it's in all five of our districts to a greater or lesser degree. And I think it's important, again, it's not to have different levels of service necessarily, but I think to meet that commitment, we need to know. And it needs to be a recognition by the Sheriff's Department about that contribution and what it means to those areas that are paying, actually paying that. And you're going to have more come on over time with construction of new units and new business areas. So, okay. I would move the resolutions, Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have motion and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 40, I need a motion to drop the Water Forum Successor Effort Update.
Move to drop.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then for item 41, you are acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the hearing to withdraw a portion of the watershed sea in the city of Elk Grove from Zone 11A of the Sacramento County Water Agency. The environmental documentation is categorical exemption.
Good morning. Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. As was written to the record, this is a hearing to consider a withdrawal of the watershed sea portion located of development within the city of Elk Grove from Water Agency Zone 11. The watershed sea is an isolated area within Zone 11. And in order to more effectively administer the implementation of infrastructure and collection of fees, the city's adopted its own fee that would replicate what Zone 11 does. And rather than have us try to tag team that, it makes a lot more sense for the city to carry that out. The area is hydraulically and geographically distinct and separate in that having the city take over a fee program for that area would not complicate the remainder of Zone 11A in terms of collection of fee or, or construction of infrastructure. One thing to note is that the Beachstone Lakes fee that we do collect in Zone 11A will continue to be received by the county water agency. That will not be taken over or administered by the city of Elk Grove. If there aren't any specific questions, I don't have a formal presentation.
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, I have a point I was going to ask you, Michael, and I guess, and this may relate, again, to this afternoon's discussion, so I won't belabor it now, but with the payment for the Beachstone Lakes mitigation fee for that contribution to the overall flood surface elevation, then those monies are under the authority of this board of supervisors. It does not require some concurrence or oversight by the city of Elk Grove, because we're talking about downstream mitigation, because I know on a couple of the items we were talking about this afternoon, there's been a differing opinion about those that were paid either as a package of fees and/or financed through the developments. And so that money will then rest with the, the board for, and it can be used for, you know, your, the approach has been taken now is either berms, flood walls or home elevations. And so that money can be used for those purposes, it's not restricted, constrained.
Nope, but nothing, absolutely nothing changes with regard to the authorization and authority of the Beachstone Lakes fee. Procedurally, it will be collected at the city and transferred to the water agency on a, on a routine basis, but there's nothing in terms of authority, ownership, discretion, none of that changes, none of that goes to the city of Elk Grove.
Okay. And we could talk this afternoon about the other funds that are set aside currently. I just wanted to ask, was one of the point, you know, on page three, just above the Beachstone Lakes paragraph, where they did a study that predicted actually a reduction of peak flood flows discharging to the south and west of the city at Bruceville Road into the farming area. So is that because they're capturing stormwater basins? Or what is it that you're, how is it they're going to basically have lesser peak flow into county? And again, our drainage system there is one that I don't, I'm not sure it's even in the stormwater utility, is it?
Correct, no.
Okay. And so I would say that's a bit problematic in that, you know, to some of the discussions we're having elsewhere, that the roadside drainage becomes the drainage system for a lot of the southern part of the county, there are other tributaries and streams and so forth. But we have no, so basically they discharge lesser or more, and when, once it leaves the city boundaries, we're in kind of a, a no maintenance situation. And I think that presents a problem, and I think it's presenting greater problems elsewhere in the county, and I can look at even the jurisdiction to the south there where water just exits and then we take what comes, but we don't have, we have no ability to maintain channels and we're having some discussions, obviously, about whether it's water resources or transportation or whomever that maintains that system. Have we given some thought to that as we exercise this particular aspect of what's being asked for today? Basically--
Yeah, I, I couldn't cite specifics from the study, but I do know that the, the drainage standards as far as infrastructure design in the city are comparable, if not in many cases, a bit more restrictive than ours in terms of how much is captured, how much is taken off from a peak flow design. The larger question of what happens downstream of a jurisdiction as it comes into the county where there's no funding source for maintenance, that, that would be an entirely separate discussion and a, you know, ultimately, in order to carry that out, there would have to be a separate maintenance entity, separate maintenance funding established in order to, to do that. So it's been a frequent subject of conversation that we've had, that we had at the board. But there's nothing specific that's going to be established through this, but the recognition that the upstream design of the infrastructure in this area will reduce peak flow is primarily a result of the additional standards that the city has in their, their storm drain design requirements.
I would ask, certainly through NAV, Mike and you, Michael, that we elevate that discussion as well as to what happens when it exits. I mean, we have to accept all the downs, you know, all the flow. And as they, it was, I didn't get this to city of Elk Grove, but whether the city of Ranch Cordova or Galt or anywhere else, that if we're, you know, having to accept that water, to the discussion we've had about roads, is that there needs to be some ability, otherwise, again, we're struggling out there right now. And, you know, I get it from the rural, you know, landowners, farmers, property owners, homeowners, and, you know, we haven't cleaned roadside ditches in a long, long time to any great extent. And, you know, that's the system that functions or not out there. And I think that as we look at, you know, drainage sheds going into the city, they take care of theirs and then it's our problem when it gets across the road. And we don't have an ability to do it. So I think we do need to elevate that focus and discussion, not just with future annexations, but with our brethren in those cities. And I can tell you that as we look at future development, I for one will be watching for that, because we need to know what's going to happen. It's not to burden folks, but if we're going to accept that responsibility, we better have some ability to, to, to meet our obligations that were there previous, but now they're, you know, now we're going to be accepting channelized water, it's going to get there quicker, it may pull off some peak flow, but nonetheless, our system is, you know, kind of a cross-country one, overland release in a lot of cases. And, and now we're going, I think, going to burden some of the, the existing system out there. So I would ask that we'd elevate that discussion, Michael, within the context, both the water resources, but certainly even with the city managers.
Sure. There's no other questions, and we just ask that your board open the hearing, consider any testimony, close the hearing, adopt the categorical exemption and adopt the enclosed resolution.
Okay. Any more questions from the board? I have no speaker slips. I have no speaker slips, but I will open the public hearing. If there is anyone that would like to speak on this item in public, please come forward.
I'm speaking of this after I'm doing some investigation out there, and some things I heard here today, and also about what I heard at city level.
Just for the record, Mr. Worthy, can you state your name?
Matt, M.A.C., the first name, last name, Worthy.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have a serious water problem out there. When you see those green weeds growing up, sticking up, that's a problem. I have, I want to know who is a developer out there. We got some information on something, it's critical. It's critical what we have found out in investigation, but I'm working with somebody else, we can't even find a tini. There is some connection in this city and other cities around it, and the housing situation, when public housing, we need you to take a good look at public housing. When we talk about water out there, you got some things going on out there, people. We got documentation, but we CC'd people, and it's for a young woman, but we CC'd all the way to Washington DC. We are trying to bring the Secretary of Housing here, and talk about some things of what's going on here with housing and the water, some things coming up this afternoon about some water, because I was told by an engineer with the city that she's going to pump some water in the ground, don't pump it in the ground on Second Avenue, because you're going to get a suckhole. If you don't know what you're talking about, stay away from the water here, because we have to have something to capture water, because this, a lot of ground here has, was built on, it just got the ground down, they got a thing that as water goes in and it goes out, there is a situation here that we got to save some water, and we have to save those waters in the same tanks that we hold up sewer in, because the ground here with the sand, here, it will seep out and go places, and you won't be there, but if you put it into a plastic, if you got a 12-foot plastic to put that water in and go pump it out later, fine, because you got some thing, people, I hate to say it, but we got some problems down the line, and that was, I would recommend to solve your problems, my recommendation to eliminate city government.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. That's the only person I have speaking, is there anyone else that would like to address the board on this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I would move the item.
Second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
For item 42, I do need a motion to actually drop this item. This was the workshop on a proposed Sacramento Homeless Policy Council.
Some move.
Yeah, I will second the motion and say that we're dropping the motion, we're dropping this, but it's not going to be dropped forever, that I do plan on bringing this back, but there were questions that board members had, and I think that they should have those questions answered and be able to make an informed decision, so, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that ends the items we have here, we do have some off-agenda speakers, if we could take care of those, they have been waiting patiently, and it's appreciated. Joel Leathermore.
I'd rather have Reverend O'Dea go first, and I'll go second.
Good morning, Reverend.
Good morning. I'm Reverend C.O. O'Dea, I'm Reverend Director of Alufamy, which is the oldest Rastafarian organization western Mississippi, established in 1976, and I'm also Executive Director of the Justice Reform Coalition here in Sacramento, which was established in 2005. I come here today to talk to you about a serious matter dealing with our community property, with our property in our church, which you've all been CC'd on many of the emails involved in this, and I haven't had any response from any of you except for Supervisor Nattoli. So I just want to read this statement real quickly to you. The state in revenue code states, "It is not the policy of the state to increase the burdens of taxation beyond the necessary cost of collection, or to impose any greater burdens in a redemption from a delinquent tax sale than are necessary to secure the payment of the original tax. All matters of taxation are resolved in favor of the taxpayer, and express statutory authorization should be found for each item of cost to be imposed upon him. Now, this code has been violated by the city and county of Sacramento with regards to your refusal to provide records, or to meet with the representatives of Alufamy about our questions and concerns about questionable fines and fees placed against our residence headquarter property as secure, and now I'm being used to force a tax sale of that property without due process, including those initiated as retaliation by a former city employee for outing him during several community meetings for, shall we say, misrepresenting. For several years, representatives of Alufamy have been asking for all the records pertaining to their property and a meeting to resolve our concerns, which is the right of a taxpayer, and this has never happened. Why is this? Why is the city not willing to open its records to us as required by law, so we can see what's behind these items of costs being imposed upon us? Why has the city and county refused to meet with us as required by law to even attempt to resolve our issues and concern? Why is the city and county so intent on taking the residence headquarters and property from where our nonprofit organization and church have served not only the disadvantaged and underrepresented Sacramento city and county communities, but many communities throughout California with no assistance from the city, county, or state, especially for questionable taxes, when corporations and developers are allowed to go tax-free and get assistance of all kinds? Why are the city and county always willing and ready to meet with the corporations, developers, and the wealthy to address their concerns in once, when people and small organizations like Alufamy are left in a void and can hardly get you to even hear or examine our concerns and issues? On June 7th, 2018, Howard Chan, city manager, who has been aware of our situation since 2014, wrote, "Greetings, Reverend O'Dea, our community development director, Ryan Devor, will be reaching out to you this week to see how we could insist. A meeting can be scheduled if our efforts do not resolve this issue for you. Hope you are well, and Howard." And on June 8th, 2019, Carlos Valencia sent us a letter in which he stated, "After review of the circumstances, I agree to postponement from the sale of the parcel in order to clear the issues surrounding the property." Now, because of these letters and because of this email, we were led in good faith to believe in and rely on the fact that things would be done to resolve our issues as have been promised to us for years. Since then, two people from the city were assigned to follow through with this, Ryan Devor and Chris Conley, and neither acted to assist us, nor did either attempt to set up a meeting to help resolve this. Both only provided statement responses which tried to justify the inaction of city officials with regard to our request for resolution, and the same can be said for Aaron Chang, a supervisor of Phil Cerner's office, which leaves us where we are today, fighting to keep our property from the tax sale acts. And all we have asked for is due process to be treated fairly and justice, justly, so we demand that the city and county of Sacramento please remove the referenced property from the tax sale rolls immediately, and then provide the requested records, and schedule a resolution meeting with the representatives of Alufamy, so we can resolve this situation, redeem our property, and move forward continuing to serve the community. Now...
If you could wrap up, if you could wrap up, that would be helpful, you've been patient and waited here for a long time, but...
Yeah, I don't like to have at least my five minutes to talk. I mean, that's, that's, that's the problem, you know, whenever we come, we have to wrap things up, but when we ask you to look into our situation and to help us, we don't get any help. I've asked Phil Cerner's office, sent numbers of requests to your office, and you haven't even responded, you haven't even called me in to talk.
I don't think that's true, but, go ahead.
No, it is true, when have you, you haven't talked to me, you haven't even...
I think my, I'm not going to get in an argument here with you.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just stating a fact, the only thing that's happened...
My staff has attempted to help you.
The only thing that has happened is that Aaron Chang has done exactly the same thing as the other people did. All they did was send us a statement about some things which weren't even true, which they didn't have no knowledge of, and telling us, oh, well, we're going to, we talked to our staff about this. How can you talk to somebody about an issue and you aren't even, the people that are involved in this, you aren't even there?
Reverend, I think we understand your point, you gave a very eloquent statement.
Oh, but I, I find, I don't, I don't see that hap, I don't see that, I don't see that, because we've been going through this for long enough time, and the responses that we have gotten from the county's people and from the city people have been erroneous, because they've never, they've never, they've never addressed any of the issues that we've asked for, because mainly because they don't know the issues that we asked, because they have never asked us, or sat down with us to deal with this.
Reverend, okay.
And this is our right as tax, as taxpayers to have those meetings and to have this stuff dealt with.
We have a board member that has a question, Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, if I could, I guess my question is, is that, my understanding is the pending tax sale is next Monday, and the city obviously has a role in that they've put forth the either liens, assessments, and/or penalties that are showing up on the tax sale for redemption, but this board, as I understand it, and certainly recall from previous conversations we've had about this and many other properties over time, that we have the ability, I guess within the framework of the law, and I guess I would ask county council, if we have the ability, I think recognizing, we're going to hear from others, and certainly I would, you know, lean to my colleague, Mr. Cerner, as well, who's the property residing in his district, as does the church, but if we have the ability to do that, again, the outstanding amount is not significant, as I understand, it's 20,000, it's significant to...
And we've also paid off all of the utilities and the stuff that have been going on.
So, you know, the amount is not, you know, measured in many, you know, tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars, it would seem to me that if we have the ability to suspend the sale, we go through this every six months with properties, and again, with, you know, certainly the ability to consider that, I'd like to know if, one, we can do that, and if, you know, maybe it requires a report back at 2:00, if, you know, it's been advertised, but again, in the past, we've intervened, rarely, but we've done that, and I guess I would like to know whether we have the ability to allow for parties to have some further conversation around that.
I do believe my, my staff has been pretty clear with county council's office, asking that very question, and the response back the way I understand it, that this is a city matter.
And I know nothing about this matter, it's not on the agenda, and I'm a little concerned that we're getting into too much detail...
I agree.
...on an off-agenda matter.
I agree.
Okay, just one point, though, but the city cannot sell the property. The county is the administrator of, unless, the city doesn't have possession of the property, so it's still, whether it's properly on the agenda or not, I get that, but if, we're not going to meet again until next Tuesday, and the sale's on Monday, again, I would ask that we could at least have some, you know, some information to us.
County executive, you've heard Supervisor Nattoli's concerns and issues, would you look into that?
I'm sorry, can I make a suggestion? We're going to have a break here, I'm more than happy to facilitate a meeting in my office upstairs with someone from county council's office and my staff, to see if there's anything that can be done, given the, you know, urgency of the calendar here.
And may I also add that the amount that you have on there is inaccurate, because we've...
We, we, we're going way too into many, too many details for something that's not on the agenda, Reverend, it's, it's the Brown Act, and so we have to abide by that.
I know the Brown Act, because I've also been a part of it.
I'm well aware.
You have an invitation to join me upstairs.
Right, the supervisor has offered to meet with you, so, thank you.
Come on.
Suzanne Brooks.
Good morning, is this still morning?
Barely.
Okay, I'm short. Okay, good morning, I'm Suzanne Brooks, and the reason that I opted to speak to you today, I live on Northrop Avenue in the section between Hampton Road and Watt Avenue, I've lived there for over 20 years, maybe 25. When those houses were built, there was, the residents who bought those houses got permission to put bushes all across the front of our houses, because the street was wide, and that would shield us from the traffic. For some reason, the county no longer recognizes us as existing there. The county trucks abuse our street by hiding from their supervisors, they are munching there, taking breaks, tearing up the street repeatedly. We complained to various offices in the district, and we were told for some years, well, the Northrop is going to be repaved, and when it gets repaved, you'll be repaved too. Well, they repaved, or you repaved, Northrop Avenue from Howe Avenue to Northrop, every part except our part. When we called and said, "What happened to our part?", they say, "You're not on Northrop." We say, "Well, where are we?" We get our mail there, we get our electricity and gas there, telephone service and everything is, says Northrop Avenue, and we've been living there for decades. I have complained, others have complained, and the street has been torn up repeatedly, and you refuse to fix it, because you say, "We're not on Northrop." So my question, and all my neighbors want to know, "Well, where are we? And to whom do we go for services?" I've contacted Susan Peters' office, and we were told it wasn't her office's responsibility. We contacted the people that do the street paving, they say, "We're not on Northrop Avenue." So for years, for 20 years, we've tried to get your attention that we are on Northrop Avenue, and there, there's a lot of us, so...
Ms. Brooks, I'm the supervisor for that area.
I know who you are.
Okay, I was just going to suggest that you meet with Mike Penrose over here, who heads up our infrastructure department, and I think he can probably straighten this out. I'm not familiar with the issue, but certainly I've always been in favor of paving roads. It might be that this is a private road, I don't know, but he will give you his card, and talk to you, and try and straighten this out.
But my question to that is, we spent 20 years trying to get this attention, why should I have to take time off from my business? It's not my responsibility, there's no mistake on our part, it's your mistake. Why can't you just do the job? All you have to do is have your street people come out and look at it. Our street was not paved when the entire rest of Northrop was paved, there's no excuse for that, we're not responsible. I'm spending time here, I have a business, I, when I'm not working, I'm not getting paid, and I've already spent time calling and calling, and so have my neighbors, so I don't need to meet with anybody, you just need to pave our street.
Well, you don't have to meet with somebody, I was just suggesting that that would be a good, Mike would be a good facilitator...
It's not good for me.
Okay, well, then you don't need to meet with them, but...
Because I'm, I'm here giving my time...
And I appreciate that.
...to bring this to your attention. I think I've given enough information, you can come out and look at the street, and then tell your people, "Pave the street."
So you just talked to the right guy.
Yeah, okay, so...
So, so...
Yeah, so, you know...
We heard you, ma'am, thank you.
And I know you know who I am, because I'm very active in civil and human rights here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mac Worthy. Mr. Worthy, you've had many opportunities to speak today, so I'm really going to hold you to your two minutes this time, because we are running late.
You know, man, I get it, because, see, I see the bus coming. The same thing in the 60s. Let me tell you something, I'll be seven, eight years old, September the 3rd. I've been in this town since I was 19 years old. Why, I gotta get over here?
It's coming.
Why are we still here? It's not your problem, it's our problem as Negro, not as African American, I'm an American Negro, South Carolina. This is how they pay us off. Our program, the same thing will happen in housing, you go and never get out of housing, because the federal government owned this city once, when it left it, it fell on its face. The city of Sacramento is trying to buy everything and run a monopoly on low-income housing. You can't even find a tini to file a suit against low-income housing. Why? Because there's a Mickey in the jar, because investors. Because there's a Mickey in the jar, because investors. The same thing gonna happen. We'll be right here, I'll be dead and gone, you'll be right back here with the same issue. KKK is my bloodline and Chester, South Carolina. Blackfoot Indian, Cherokee Indian and white boy. I ain't got nothing to no Africa. But why are we back here? Because these people here got paid for these programs, were never fulfilled. And that's the same thing going on with housing. All these little programs in the neighborhood, dropping crumbs for a vote. That's when I stick to Donald Trump. He will be there again. And if he not there, it gonna be holy hell in America. Either way it go. So, that's when I encourage young black men, vote for Donald Trump. He gonna give you a job in economics. You don't have to be on, in a welfare state. This is their welfare state. When people come to the sixty movements, what did they do? Sign your, your wife sign or your woman with your baby sign the voucher and you was arrested. You had no experience or nothing. You had no job.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy.
So, these are the things that we gonna have to stop here and you can start today. And I'll be back here this afternoon on some others.
Thank you, Mr. Worthy. I do have cards free for this afternoon. And that concludes our morning session, I believe.
Yes, it does.
Do you want to do your nominations? Will of the board? We got a couple of minutes.
That would be item 48.
Yes.
I thought you had one other person you called before Reverend Day. I think she was stood up to speak.
Oh, she, she, I actually gave him a lot of time so that they could...
Oh, she a lot of the time, okay. I didn't know, I just wanted, okay.
I gave him her time.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's item 48.
Yes.
So, for your nominations, you're continuing to June 4th, the Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cardova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4B, Slough House, Wilton, Consoness, County Service Area 4C, Delta Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, continuing to June 18th, Elk Grove, Consoness Cemetery District, and Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Local Childcare Planning and Development Council, Sacramento County Youth Commission, Southeast Area Planning Advisory Council, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and for your first item, we have Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council.
Nominate Mark Jacobs, please.
Okay. Children's Coalition, Mr. Kennedy.
Chiefs recommend nominating Cindy Kane and Alyssa Duncan and waive the process. For a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And we'll continue the remainder to June 18th.
Consoness Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Frost.
Nominate James Crowder, please.
Okay, Supervisor Natoli.
I don't have any current applicants, so we'll continue that for a month.
To June 18th?
Yeah.
Okay. Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, Mr. Natoli.
Would nominate Sandra Whitehouse.
And would you like to continue the remainder to June 18th?
Yes.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to June 4th.
Maternal-Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Marion Batson and continue the remainder to June 18th.
Sacramento County Mental Health, Mr. Natoli.
Continue, please.
Is June 18th okay?
That's fine.
And Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, Mr. Kennedy.
Continue to June 18th.
Mr. Natoli.
June 18th.
Okay, that concludes your nominations.
Thank you. Then we will have a recess. I believe we do have closed session, correct?
Yes, we did.
All right. We'll come back to order and would the clerk please call the roll to reestablish a quorum?
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Peters? Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item 43 is the Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for Folsom Boulevard at Cottage Way Sidewalk Infill Project. I do need a motion to drop two of the four properties. So, property number two is the Three Oaks Properties LLC located at 2100 Fulton Avenue.
I'll move to drop.
A second. Please vote.
Oops. Sorry. Can you please vote again? Unanimous vote. And then I'll also need a second motion to drop Three Oaks Properties Limited Partnership located at 2132 Fulton Avenue.
I'll move.
Second.
Unanimous vote. And so that leaves two properties remaining. The first property is the Ramirez Apartments located at 9425 Folsom Boulevard.
What? Didn't we just drop the two Foltons?
Folsom, no, Folsom.
Oh, I'm sorry, Folsom Boulevard.
Enunciation, okay.
Yes, Folsom Boulevard, 9425.
Good.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Kennedy and members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager for Acquisitions with our Real Estate Division and I'm here today to introduce this item which recommends board approval for four resolutions of necessity authorizing eminent domain actions to acquire real property interest for the Department of Transportation's Folsom Boulevard and Cottage Way Sidewalk Project. The Folsom Boulevard project, portion of the project involves the construction of new improvements including class eight, class two bicycle lanes, separated sidewalks with landscaping, improved drainage infrastructure and driveway elevation conforms on private property. The Cottage Way portion of the project involves the construction of new improvements including class two bicycle lanes, sidewalks, improved drainage infrastructure and driveway elevation conforms on private property. The purpose of the project is to establish a safer environment for all modes of transportation and create a more attractive, functional and publicly inviting corridor. Of the nine acquisitions required for the project, four properties were originally subject to this board item. However, the Real Estate Division has recently reached agreements with the two owners of the affected properties, leaving two properties for which the resolutions of necessity are required. The remaining two properties are located in different neighborhoods within Sacramento County. The Ramirez Apartments LLC property is located at 9425 Folsom Boulevard in Sacramento between Mayhew Road to the west and Butterfield Way to the east. The Thomas D. Kincaid, Thomas D. and Laura Lee Lee Armstrong, husband and wife, is joint tenants property, is located at 2100 Kincaid Way in the Cottage Park area of Sacramento. Both of the subject properties are currently developed with single-family residences. The property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of permanent public facilities and utilities easement and temporary construction easements needed for the project across portions of the two affected properties. The county obtained appraisals for each of the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of various easements I just mentioned. The county's negotiations with the remaining property owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure necessary easement interests in the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's resolutions of necessity and anticipated and eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the required real property interest and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory resolution necessity findings is contained in, within the staff report included with the agenda packet along with the owner contact histories. Notice of intention to seek approval for the resolutions of necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least 15 days before today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members here are available to address those for you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the Folsom Boulevard project is, I went by yesterday and I couldn't tell from the street addresses, is this the undeveloped property or is this the developed property with actually the apartments on it west of Butterfield?
This is the undeveloped property with the large single residence kind of in the middle of the property.
Right, in the middle and you got a, you got a field out front there.
Correct.
Okay, so that's the piece of property and that was the one that actually had a subdivision approved for. We went through quite a bit of deliberation at the board level. That map has expired?
Correct.
Expired recently, about a year ago, I think. Maybe not.
I think, yeah, maybe it was a little bit longer than that.
Was a little longer than that. I know they got extensions because of the recession and so forth, so. So, we did not, there's no existing additional right of way in there. That would have been received at the time if that map had only been finalized and then something had been constructed, but we're having to acquire the right of way for this, and I say it's not a big, if there is the single-family home, I don't, the Ramirezes don't occupy the home though, do they?
No, the Ramirez LLC Apartments LLC is, I think, simply just a vesting title named entity. I'm not reflective of the ownerships.
All right, so there was no previous dedication along Folsom Boulevard that would have had an IOD that would have taken it to a point further into the property?
My understanding is if they, the owner, previous owner had gone forward with that map that was contemplated back in 2007, there would be requirements for dedication resultant from development.
Right. But what about, so that lot hasn't been subdivided any time since we took improvements for Folsom Boulevard? I mean, basically their property line comes right out to, well, not quite edge of pavement, but there's not much shoulder there at all, so.
Correct.
All right, and then, I couldn't tell from the history here that has, what's been the most recent contact? You get no response. I see February you reached out.
Yes, and I believe there was a reach out in March and we have not, my officer has not heard from the property owner respectively. There was some dialogue earlier on and then in the last couple of weeks, we have not heard anything from the property owner.
Okay, so we're, we are basically gonna construct all the frontage improvements though for this property now?
Correct.
Which would have under previous may have been constructed. I don't know if they've been in the right spot for this project, but, but they would have been constructed. So, we, in addition to acquiring the working easement and the area needed for the improvements, we're gonna do all the improvements, put the sidewalk and curb gutter. And what about the driveway issue? Because that previous development had, if I'm not mistaken, and I just talked about here, had a couple of access points onto the, how are we gonna deal that? Are you just putting straight sidewalk and that any future development would have to make a sidewalk, make a sidewalk cut? Or are you gonna construct at least one driveway?
That, that's my understanding, that there will be a driveway constructed to service the existing residents, but the contemplation of what the subdivision map would put there in the future if it were to go forward is, is not part of our project.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions? I have no speaker slips on this, I believe, so.
Move the item.
Second. Do we need to have two? We're gonna do number one first.
This is for the, yes, 9425 Folsom Boulevard.
Okay. Great. We're gonna do two motions.
I got the two motions. What for? Because we're dropping?
We already took two separate motions to drop those other two properties and then we need...
You said Folsom again. I keep hearing Fulton.
Oh, yeah, I said Folsom. Yeah, we're gonna, this, what you just made a motion on is for Folsom.
So, this, first vote is on the Ramirez Apartments LLC?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Now we will take up the Thomas D. and Laura Lee Armstrong property.
On Kincaid Way, correct.
Is there a motion? Chair will make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have a couple of minutes before we can take the next item.
Okay, then we just got a card for the, for an off-agenda item. Mr. Gale?
Yes. Frederick Gale, 7336 Hurlong Way, North Highland, a resident for four to some plus years. I've been there quite, well, at several times. The court enforcement officers have been there writing up statements as to my fence. It's metal and wood and he's not specific as to what's wrong with it. I think the bill is becoming $1,000, I think he's saying, the charges on it. Undoubtedly, the person is not, undoubtedly is colorblind or whatever, never took art, never took mathematics or none of that, and I've got many compliments on my fence how well it's done. I've used materials that come from trees and they never grow forever after you cut them and that's what I've used. And I don't know what, Jackson Powell or whatever, but this guy, I don't think is an expert on either one of those. And if it was possible, I would like to invite the board, you can't come at, all at once, I don't think, to see what's wrong with the fence. Great compliments on it. Said, wow, really creative, what have you. Constantly he writes and the person in charge of the court enforcement never answered the phone. He's not available, what do you need to talk to him about? I would like to see them. And I would like to invite the board to come to my house, 7336, see inside and outside. Duncan Fife and other stuff is inside, but not on the outside, that it's getting to be the same person who wrote a letter 20-some years ago. I got the old thing. Undoubtedly, they liked my house or something. I never borrowed a cup of soda, sugar or nothing and my wife had pretty good salaries and took care of our children. And you can go through the place in the morning, you think it's a marshalling place for trucks and whatever you see there. Coming around West Burn and here along, you can hardly go there, cars for sale, et cetera, but this individual doesn't seem to see that. And I, I need relief. I'm tempted to get a lawyer, but I think it should be settled other than that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And just for the record, Mr. Gale, the property you're talking about is a 7336 Hurlong Way?
That's correct. I've been there for four to some years plus.
Thank you, sir. And we were caught up.
Okay, item 44, I do need a motion to drop this item from the agenda. This is the Capitol Public Radio Fee Waiver. Request for a fee waiver for the use permit located at 7351 Eagles Nest Road.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And here we are again.
Okay, and now we have another break.
Yes, we do. I guess we'll just take a 13-minute recess. We'll come back to order. The clerk, please call the roll one more time.
Okay, Supervisors Serna?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Frost? Natoli?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you.
Okay, for your 230 item, item 45, this is the 3929 Minnesota Avenue Appeal of a Tree Violation in the Fair Oaks Community.
Good afternoon, members of the board. LeAnn Moffett, the County Planning Director, here to give the staff presentation. No PowerPoint, just a verbal presentation today.
If you could wait to approach, that's all right. That's all right.
That is the appellant, so I assume we'll take the staff presentation first and then we'll give the appellant an opportunity to, to come address the board.
Yes.
So, we did provide your board with a staff report. Staff is recommending denial of the requested tree appeal. Mr. Andrade is appealing payment of an $11,400 fee related to impacts to three protected oak trees at 3929 Minnesota Avenue. It includes trenching, grading and fill of one tree, improper construction of a driveway affecting a tree and removal of a third tree. The history is a building permit was issued in January of 2015. Planning staff received complaints from neighbors beginning in June of 2017. Our staff went out and conducted a site visit and found impacts to two protected trees. Those impacts are documented visually in attachment two to your board report. Staff, as we typically do, placed a hold on the final issuance of the building permit. And we also provided Mr. Andrade with email correspondence, which is in your report as attachment three, documenting the violations, directing future compliance with protective tree measures and requiring a site plan to begin the permit process and to allow calculation of the tree replacement fees. Per staff indicate that there were multiple phone calls in this timeframe. Mr. Andrade indicates that he was, had a difficulty and was not able to successfully contact planning staff. In May 2018, a third tree was removed without a required tree permit. In October 2018, the applicant sought to finalize the building permit, but there was this hold that planning had due to the violation. There was contact between the applicant and staff. Staff resent the original violation information. In the absence of the originally requested materials, including a site plan, staff met with the real estate agent, Mr. Hurley, on the site on October 30th, 2018. Staff verbally estimated the tree impact- Staff verbally estimated the tree impacts, and the applicants were seeking a means to reduce the fee, and the only thing that we could, that staff could think of was having them pay directly to the Tree Foundation to avoid a minor $350 IT fee, which is a pretty small component of the overall cost. After not hearing back, staff invoiced the amount on November 20th, 2018. Mr. Andrade did seek to work with per management staff, and over a period after November and December and January, repeatedly requesting to reduce the fee amount, and I believe we have correspondents requesting approximately 50% fee reduction. However, there are no provisions in the ordinance to reduce the fee. My first contact with Mr. Andrade was in, on February 15th of 2019, and I have a written record that the per manager briefed me in mid-February about the issues with a request to reduce the fee amount, and I similarly concluded that there was no provision to reduce the fee amount. Mr. Andrade did pay his fees on March 6, 2019, and also made arrangements to file for this appeal due to loss of monies, due to untimely response by the county employee, and not getting due process. So Mr. Andrade does feel that there was a lack of response on the part of county staff, and is requesting you waive the appeal fee, and again, staff recommends denial due to lack of staff error. Any questions upstairs?
Questions?
Now, a moment, maybe hear from the property owner.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a little anxiety. This has got me a little mad, so I apologize. I'm a little fidgety, and I'm trying my best to keep my, I'm not, this has cost me a lot of money, and it's not just due to this issue with the county, it's just the getting, just the timely response. And the thing is, I'm going to skip way ahead to the point, and I'm going to say, okay, the tree violations, one of the little gas lines where we dug, we had to, PG&E broke. The gas line was broke. It had to be dug up. That was the only place it can be. That's where it was at. Had to be replaced. One hand is the, I figure the county had, we have a permit. The county came over, signed that off, told us we had to fill it with sand, put the thing that PG&E came back in, filled it up. She gave us an order to stop work. I called her, called her, called her, couldn't get in touch with her. I went to John Dorborough, which is a boss, talked to him. I went to Todd Newington, which is on the counter, talked to him. I went for days at a time, every week, because, keep in mind, we were in contract to sell the property, but we couldn't sell the property without a final, without, and they had a hold on our final, which is fine. So I went through, contacted them, John Dorborough again, hey, can we get ahold of Claire Williams? Todd Newington called Claire Williams. John Dorborough called Claire Williams. They all called Claire Williams. Voicemail was full. They did a inner-office memo or whatever they did. She got ahold of Todd Newington. She still, well, now, let me back up. I actually, yeah, no, that's right. She got ahold of Todd Newington. She set it up to where she can meet Dave Hurley. Dave Hurley is actually an owner on the property as well, at the property. She met Dave Hurley at the property. Dave explained to her, Warren, we need to get this done. What can we do? What's the fastest way? She said, you're going to have to pay $11,000. Fine, well, Red, just send the paperwork to us. She did not send the paperwork to us. I went into the county the next day, went down to Gady's office and said, hey, where can I, I need to pay this. We haven't got it yet. They called her again. No luck. Came back every week for two months, a month and a half, came back every week, tried to call her, could not do it. The only time I got any, when I got through to anybody, because John said, here, called Jessica Brant, I think her name is, called Jessica Brant, guess who calls me up? Claire calls me up. Claire calls me up, me and Claire haven't had the best of dialogue with each other, and I get it, but the thing is, is that I lost the sale because I could not get that paid off. We fell out of escrow. We were in escrow for $740,000. We came in, we sold it for $700,000. I didn't ask them for $40,000. I didn't ask them for anything. I, what I asked them for, I said, you know what? I agreed to pay this. I don't agree with this, fine, I think it's absolutely crazy, but there's no accountability for you guys. When I'm saying, hey, look, I'm willing to pay this. Let me get, let's get it done. She gave me everything in the book, and then when I went to LeAnn, LeAnn said, or Gale before LeAnn, well, you got this paperwork from Claire, you emailed this paperwork, where's the site plans? Where's this? Where's that? I'm like, we're past that. We're past that. I figured, I had a permit, they came out, the county came out and signed it out, PG&E came out, rehooked the gas line up, we filled it back in, the tree's beautiful. What's the problem? So, I asked them, I said, it took you two months, I lost the sale. I said, it costs me $3,500 a month, my mortgage is $2,500 a month, that's the guy paying my mortgage to you every month? I said, hey, you need to take, cut it in half to $5,000, or make it $5,000, it's only fair. That's what I asked. I wasn't mean. Got nowhere. They just keep putting me through the, up, up the ladder, and then she told me, I can't do that. So finally, I went to my friend, who knows all of you guys, said, hey, you need to get ahold of these people. This is what you need to do. So I tried to, I called her, I told her I was going to make an appeal. She told me I could make the appeal. She said, that's what my, Chris said, that was what my choices were. Well, then, when I went back down, paid it, I said, I'm going to pay it under protest. He said, I can do that. I went downstairs, went to pay it, to get my final thing paid off. I wasn't even at plant, her desk. I was at another girl's desk, and guess who comes along and stands over? Claire. So she comes over and stands over there, and meanwhile, I put a call into Howard, to your office, and Howard called me back at the time. Howard calls me back, she's saying, you can't make the appeal. LeAnn's, there's no appeal. You can't appeal. LeAnn's going to tell you, you can't appeal. I'm like, okay, just get LeAnn. Oh, and you need to do this. I've already paid the money, but she said, you need to move these rocks. I need this, before we give you a final. I'm like, can you give it to me in writing? No, you got it. No, I don't. I don't have it in writing. So I said, look, I need to get this done. So I said, I don't even want to talk to you. So basically, Howard listened to the conversation of her saying that, because he sat on hold, then he, I got a call back from her later on that night, and she said that she's going to let the appeal go through because it was against her better judgment, she doesn't agree with it, but Chris Bohuji talked her into, to doing it. That's what she told me on the phone. So, my thing is this, I'm very passionate, and I get it, but I don't step on knowing to get ahead, and alls I want is fair. I'm not saying that we weren't wrong. We took out one tree, one tree. That was a tree that was half-dead, which I got pictures too. But the thing is, is that, I don't, alls I wanted to do was just get it over with, and I couldn't. And then there's no accountability. She can, even, there was no reason for her to come to that desk the day that I stood there. That's just even more. I was so, I didn't want to come here today because I'm that mad, because they're supposed to help us. I paid a lot for my permits. I paid for everything. I said, look, I'll pay for it. Why do I have to wait a month and a half or two months to receive that? And do I have to go to John Dorborough and Todd Newington and go every week down to Gady before this lady will give it to me? What was her reasoning? Then I asked LeAnn, I said, what is, what's a fair amount of time? Tell me what it is. They never answered my question. Chris was on the phone, she was on the phone, and I wouldn't let them off the phone because I was saying, give me what's fair. Tell me what's, what do you consider a good amount of time? And she could not answer that. So at, at any, at any point in time, they can do whatever they want. They can hold our sale up, they can hold whatever, whatever they want up. I'm not saying I'm 100% right, but I'm, I was, I accepted my responsibility, and that, that amount of time to receive that is crazy. That's just not fair. That's all I really have to say. I apologize for getting loud. I'm just very frustrated.
We, we hear much louder, so.
Well, yeah. Sorry.
Are there any questions?
Yes, thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Mr. Andrade, so, just trying to, you're, you're excited, so I want to make sure I understand, you're not complaining about the legality of the fee? You're complaining about not getting clearance that you paid the fee?
Well, I am complaining about the legality of the fee, because when I, when I read into it, and I asked her this too, and it says it in the email, which I'm sure you got a copy, I said, it says here, in your county fees, anything over $500, I should be, I should be getting, I should get a hearing. I didn't get a hearing. I, that never even came clear to me. Now, I did tell her, in all fairness to them, on that point, I did say, hey, we need to finish this. Just get us, just get it to us. So David went to her, because I, I had nothing nice to say to Claire, and Claire probably has nothing nice to say to me, but.
And that, that might be part of the problem.
Yeah. Well, no, but the prob, the part of the problem is, is that, listen, at that point in time, we're, we're saying, we're accepting, we're saying, let's, let's, we need to do this. We need to sell the property. We can't get the clearance until.
Okay, I heard you say that before.
Yeah.
So you paid the fee under protest?
Correct.
And?
Well, I had to, to sell it, because I didn't want to keep paying that gentleman back there mortgage every month and taxes and everything else that comes with owning a property.
And that's, that's why there's a process to pay it under protest.
Yeah, thank you.
So, but today, it's not clear to me, you're, you are protesting that fee for what reasons? You did cut down a tree, and you had unpermitted work in the drip line of the trees?
I did not have unpermitted work. It was, to my understanding, I had the, I had, when that, I had a permit for the property. It had, it had the whole plan for landscaping and everything on the plan. She told me I needed to put the trees on there. She did tell me that. And when I dealt with the county, even John Dorborough, I wish he was here today too, because I asked him, I said, because we didn't plan on having to drip, to dig that drip line. We had a 401 or whatever, where they come and mark the place where you can dig, but when we dug by the front door, the line was broke. There was already a gas riser there, so the line was broke. They came out there and tapped that off and said, cut it, so the house is right here. The gas line's right here.
Well, we're not on the site, and we can't go to the site, but we did have staff on the site.
Yeah.
And, yeah, so.
So it had, it had to be dug. PG&E was going to dig it, and PG&E was going to cost, charge $8,000 to dig it, so we said we'd dig it ourselves. I let John Dorborough know, and I said, do I need to add everything? He said, no, the riser was there. So that's all we did, is if you look at the, if you look at your picture on the drip line...
Yes?
I mean, it says, I don't see where all the, the roots are exposed, and it says the canopy of the tree, the longest part, has to be over, so there's, I mean, looking at the county rules on the trees, I, that's, that's still okay.
To me, it looks like you're within the drip line of the tree. We're looking at the same picture, to me, but I'm, I'm not on the property, and it's already covered up already, so.
Let me see what this rule I just pulled up.
So I think, I think I understand your complaint, and I'd like to give the Planning Director an opportunity to respond to those items, if you could take a seat.
Yes.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, you want me to respond to the trenching component, or?
Yes.
So first, he did have a building permit, but that is not the same as a permit to impact the oak trees, which he, again, was informed in writing back with the original notice to him back in 2017. This is the first I'm hearing about the PG&E component. I haven't heard that before today, but in any regard, if you're going to impact a protected oak tree, you need to come to the county first, and you need to get a permit to do that from the county.
And when you come in for a building permit, do you get something in writing about the oak trees, tree permit?
I actually.
You said it went out in writing, but the timing is kind of what I'm questioning you about.
Sure. The information that came from planning staff came as a result of neighborhood complaints into the planning department as a result of impacts and improper effects, so we had neighbors complaining to us that the oak trees were being impacted. I do not know exactly what information building would have provided him. The complaint didn't come from building, the complaint came from neighbors. But we did go out there promptly and informed him what he needed to do through the rest of the construction process. He did remove another tree even after we gave him that information. That's when the tree removal occurred, like, I think, close to a year after that. So, we did not feel he was following the information that we gave him.
Yeah. And are you familiar with the, the phone calls not being responded to situation?
Sure. I do believe there were phone calls back and forth. I do not have a documentation of how many calls there were. It's pretty clear from my review, because I did try to take a very independent review of what happened here. It was an extended period of time where there was no response from him, and it wasn't really until they tried to final the permit, where they realized that we did have this hold, and they were not going to be able to final the building permit hold, when they started really contacting us and trying to respond to clear it. And that's when staff went back out on site to work with them with regard to what are the fees, since they had never provided us the requested information for us to assess the fee. So then we did respond to them. We went out on site, that's in the staff report on October 30th, to begin to assess the actual impacts. Yeah.
So, on October 30th, you were, your department was on site?
Yes.
And made a determination, and so, documentation-wise, is, would the determination have been made at that moment, or do you, does a letter come? I'm trying to understand when the letter comes out versus verbal and the phone calls and that sort of thing.
Sure. My understanding is that they continued to try to approach us to have a reduction in the fee amount. And so, much of the conversation, and I have spent some number of hours on the phone, and much of that is typically about how can they negotiate a lower fee amount. So my understanding is much of the back and forth and on their part is to protest the fees, to protest the fee amount, and to try to figure out how to lower it. So, as it was relayed to me, the conversation on October 30th at the site plan was, they were trying to seek any way that they could to reduce the fees. The only off, option we really had was for them to make a direct payment to the Tree Foundation, which would avoid a very minor $350 IT fee, which is a pretty small component. But that, nothing came back in, they didn't do anything, so then our staff finally invoiced them three weeks later on November 20th. So it did take us three weeks from the site visit to invoice them. Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
So I guess I have a couple of questions. One is, what, do we have a standard process or protocol in place for phone calls to be routed, especially phone calls of an urgent nature, so that if mail, you know, phone, voicemail boxes are full, it then goes to seek a voicemail box that is not full, so that, you know, human-to-human contact can be made?
Yeah, I would say our department is one of the places where you can still get a live person on a phone. So we have a receptionist, we have a secretary, there are other options. We have a counter, you know, our, obviously, the bulk of our staff are here downtown, at the downtown counter, so you can always come in line. We have backup staff. We do have one primary tree person, but if you come in.
If someone is calling a specific number, whether it be the Planning Director or anyone else, and it rolls over because the voicemail's full, or the person's not there, is there an automatic redirect to, to, to someplace where someone's going to actually pick it up?
I don't know if we have rollover, but certainly we have all of our phone numbers on the website. We have a main reception number. We have email. We have everything available for people to reach us.
But there's no receptionist that, that someone could go back to, and, that's probably an old-fashioned word, but, you know, an operator that could roll back to and could run and get somebody, or make sure you knew that they were there?
Well, we would probably take a message, rather than necessarily finding someone, and a lot of times when we are busy, we do encourage people to come in to the business assistance counter over here, because you can always just go get in line and, and.
I guess my concern stems from if, if someone's given a specific number to call, to use, they use the number as directed, they continue to be frustrated because their voicemail box is full or whatnot, and there's no automatic rollover to find the receptionist, or the, a person that is, been charged to kind of always be available to speak to, to someone should they call. they call. You're really relying on that, the initiative of someone to, to then determine at some point, using some amount of time, to either come in or go to the website or, you know, figure it out, right?
I will say, we try to be responsive. I mean, we do at times have heavy periods, but I do believe that staff return calls. So I don't, I don't have a record of exactly what the back and forth was.
And we don't have a standardized way of recording or tracking phone calls, right?
No.
No.
We have a high volume of calls, a very high volume of calls into our business assistance center. And so we do not keep and track every voicemail message. That would be.
So, next line of question has to do with what you said right at the outset of arriving at the podium, which is, this is the first time where you were unaware about the PG&E connection, the gas issue, gas line issue?
Yes.
So that seems to be a pretty big disconnect from what the appellant is stating and what you claim your, your knowledge is of why the trench was dug in the first place.
Right. I mean, I have spent some number of hours on the phone with him. I have not heard that argument before. But in, irregardless of that, we do need to be informed and that a tree permit does need to be obtained if you are impacting an oak tree.
What happens in the case of a gas leak? I mean, if there's, I mean, if it's a gas line versus a water line or a gas line versus a telephone line, gas is a different kind of utility, right?
Right.
It's got a very obvious public safety aspect to it.
Certainly.
So it troubles me, it troubles me to hear that there's that much of a departure between that narrative and, and your narrative.
Well, I didn't hear him say that there was an emergency situation. I think if there was an emergency gas leak.
I understand that, but if someone is, if someone is dealing with the utility, a large utility like PG&E and they're saying, "We need to get at this gas line because it's broken," my first, this is just me speaking, but my first inclination is, "Oh, I need to go get a tree permit." So, you see what I'm saying?
Right.
So I guess, and this is a question, I guess, for the appellant when, when Niffey comes back to the podium, is that, is there any documentation of the need for that gas line to be addressed with some immediacy or, or not? Or is this just kinda hearsay?
This, today was the first I'd heard of a gas, of the gas line.
Okay, so maybe you, Mr. Andrade, could, you know, if you're gonna come back and answer some questions, add that to your list, because I'd like to know, how has that been documented? Because you, as far as I know, you've just told both the planning director and the board of supervisors for the first time that there was a gas line.
Supervisor Natoli.
Just before, along that same line, does, does PG&E know about tree permits?
Yes. We have actually worked extensively with PG&E on tree permitting issues. Yeah, in fact, they voluntarily came forward, needed to remove a fair number of trees throughout the county, paid, I wanna say, $250,000 for those tree removals, which we were able to turn over to the Tree Foundation for the Neighborhoods program, which was a great success on both our and PG&E's part. So, yes.
Okay, so if PG&E was putting a line into that property, they would know that they, and they were going to run over the roots, they would know they needed a tree permit?
I believe so, yes. We have worked extensively with PG&E in the past.
Sorry, Don, I just wanted to follow up on the same line.
That's fine. No, you've asked, both you and Supervisor Serna asked some questions that I had too. I guess, trying to piece this together a bit, so if I understand, certainly from the testimony from Mr. Andrade and then your response to my colleagues, Leanne. So in June 2017, complaints came in. Somebody went out, I don't know if it was Claire, whoever went out, and issued a letter later that month, I guess, June 30th, the end of the month. And so these pictures that we see here clearly show a trench. If they're, if they're the ones that are referenced in the, in the memo, doesn't show it to the front door, although I don't know, you can't see beyond the, the, kind of the rise there next to the driveway where you see the car in the, in the background. But if, in fact, there was a, you know, an issue of safety, both for, certainly for the occupants of the house, but, you know, neighborhood, I guess, adjacent neighbors. So that does raise a question, and I guess Mr. Andrade will respond to that when he comes out. But I, so what was the time lag though? So this was June 30th and then the next chronicling you have is May of 2018, when there was a tree removed. What sort of activity? I mean, I, I heard Mr. Andrade go through, again, without any dates attached to it, but numerous phone calls, outreach, messages left, messages returned, messages not returned, back and forth, back and forth. Is that what was going on between June of 17 and I guess finally October of, of 18?
I think our normal, our normal practice is we put a hold on the building permit. We provide the owner with information. We don't really have the staff to go out and do like weekly site checks or, you know, we figure eventually they'll clear it when they need to clear their building permit hold.
Okay, so.
And apparently there were some calls back and forth, but I don't have a, I don't, we didn't keep those voicemails.
And again, it, you know, it, you know, it's, I don't wanna get too much back and forth here, but I'm trying to understand, again, obviously we have, you know, the requests before us to weigh the fees, you give us your recommendation. I guess, kinda going to what Mr. Serna asked about and Susan alluded to in her comments too, kinda this point of context, I recognize it, you guys got a heavy volume and, you know, and, and such, but matters of urgency and then we have multiple departments and yet ultimately this rests with planning department on an enforcement action. And so we see what we have before us today. And, you know, I've had similar issues, not related to trees, but where folks have actually shown receipts, they've been down, waited to visit with somebody at the counter, you know, but people say, "Well, we didn't have any, there was no appointment, we don't have this," and they left a message. Well, we don't have anything on the message machine. They show me phone records that say, "I called the county at such and such a time." And, you know, and that back and forth doesn't really get to, to solution set here. But I guess if there was some urgency, because again, there was trenching that was identified in June, then subsequently there was a tree removed and, you know, ultimately there's a fiscal impact. Now, you happen to sell the house and obviously, you know, that got accomplished. But I am concerned about that, that, you know, on our, on the receiving end, recognize there's a responsibility and certainly not letting Mr. Andrade off the hook on this, that, you know, to continue to pursue that if you don't get a call back. But that we have a responsibility, particularly as a matter of urgency involved here, volume or not. I mean, our offices deal with that all the time. And it's, and I am concerned because in the staff report and the analysis, what's said is that, I guess this is how we offer our justification, is that staff maintains that internal policies have been followed and that Mr. Andrade was negligent in his response to comply with the tree preservation ordinance, end of sentence. It seems to me that when you have this back and forth, that, you know, maybe that's findings and obviously, you know, you're the one standing before us, fielding the questions, but, and, and, you know, I certainly trust your judgment and, you know, oftentimes you do intervene when appropriate. But I, I guess I, I am concerned and, you know, and obviously staffs here and, and, and the audience here today, that in matters like this, particularly now, we're, we're two years past the initial complaint. Tree's gone, house has been sold, and now we get this appeal, and you're learning for the first time about the PG&E part of that. I don't know if there's some other internal processes that don't require such a dedication of your time, but, you know, that could help us get to some, you know, pinpointing that if there are matters like this, and particularly when it's got other county departments involved, because building department doesn't have any responsibility in this. They issued the building permit, you attached an email to that, and, you know, he goes in and, and, and does the permit of work, noting obviously that you call attention to this based upon the neighborhood complaints. I don't know, it just seems a bit compounded here. And again, it's not assigning blame or, you know, any lack of attention to the matter, but I am just a little concerned that, you know, I don't know how many of these we get any given year, how many tree violations, but I imagine they're a fairly modest in number as it relates to development of sites. Is that true? And then I see you.
No, there are a fair number of tree violations. We are out in the field. I think, I was working with Claire on two free, tree violations this morning, as a matter of fact. With regard to the urgency, I will say, I mean, you can see there was a long period of time between June of 2017 and October of 2018.
Right, that's what I was asking.
When it became very urgent on their part to finally, they realized that they weren't gonna be able to move forward, in my mind, and they started contacting us to try to figure out what they needed to do. Admittedly, it took us three weeks working with them because they kept saying they wanted to try to lower the fee before we issued them the dollar amount. He finally, Mr. Andrade finally reached me in the middle of February.
2019.
2019. Had repeated conversations with him. They were entirely about, could he pay 50%? What could he do to negotiate with me a different fee amount? It wasn't so much the urgency to get it done and signed off, but an urgency to try to convince me that I needed to lower the fee.
But what I'm talking about, the permit of work though, that if there was a gas line that needed to be connected, the house was still occupied. I mean, that was part of the work, right? There was also driveway install.
We didn't prevent that. In our mind, the trench was done, the impacts had happened. So at that point, all there was for them to do with regard to the tree violation was just to pay the, the impact fee to the tree. We didn't prevent the gas line or the building permit or anything from moving forward.
No, okay, but that, you kinda missed my point. And this is what I was trying to get to, is that, no, you didn't prevent that, but it's after the fact in that if there's some instruction about avoiding root lines or drip, drip lines or whatever, and obviously they're trying to save money, not paying PG&E $8,500 to do the trenching, we issued a permit for, I guess, a repair to, to the gas line, to the main service line that comes into the, to the house. I, I trust that's what it was. They'd already begun the trench because that's a necessity, a pretty urgent matter, particularly if there's a, to Mr. Serna's question about if there was a leak or something like that, that. And so that was kinda after the fact. You went out there and the trenching had already been done under a permit that had been issued. Now, if the tree ordinance is referenced, I mean, there's a lot of things that are referenced. I mean, the building codes, you know, hundreds of pages and so forth, and so that it doesn't absolve them of responsibility to be, you know, knowledgeable about certain aspects, but, and then obviously the tree was removed after that. But I guess, to my, that was my point about the urgency, is that they needed to get that gas line, you just learned about today.
We didn't stop them from doing that. We didn't stop them from working on the gas line at all.
No, you didn't stop them, but he already dug the trench to put the gas line in, so whatever damage had been done to the tree that we're, you know, asserting here, already been done, right?
Right, yes.
Based, under a, under a permit that had been issued to replace the gas line, didn't say go next to the tree, but it was a proper permit.
Yeah, presumably, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I didn't investigate the.
No, I know. Again, I appreciate your effort. I know you spent a lot of time on this. Thanks.
I have a suggestion. I'd like to refer this to Mike Penrose, who's handles the infrastructure and worked with planning to kind of, what we're missing here is a timeline and the details and which kind of permits come first and when the gas company was there and what they did. And I think it'd be easier to do in a smaller setting. So, he is retiring, so I'm, hopefully we can get an appointment with him maybe this week. Mr. Andrade can come in and work out, maybe you can bring, not maybe, but please bring the appropriate persons from your department who have all the, the dates and the facts in line, because I think that's what really this is a lot about.
Okay, definitely.
And, so.
I'm just gonna ask county council if there's a timing issue. Is there a problem? Is there some clock ticking that?
Can you pull up the, I don't think so. I think it's just, appeal had to be submitted and writing to the clerk of the board within 15 days. Has to be on the clerk's agenda within 30 days, which it was, so it can be continued again.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I will note, we did allow him to appeal. Technically, I think it says 15 days from his original notice, which would have been, would have been in 2017. But it did not include information about that 15-day appeal period. So that was one of the things that I did choose to reissue that notice so that he could appeal it, since he hadn't been informed of his appeal rights.
So for your meeting with Mike Penrose, I'd go back to 2017 and I think the report that comes back to us ought to just lay all of these dates out and who said what to whom and it'll, it'll make more sense to all of us. So I would ask that we continue this to June?
Fourth.
Fourth.
Okay.
Second.
That's not a budget day, is it?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Can I, can I respond to what I'm saying to you guys?
Not if you're gonna go into details and, about arguing with.
At this point, it might not be in your best interest.
Okay.
You don't wanna push it over to June 4th?
Well, no, not really, I don't. And this is.
Okay, well, if you insist on an answer today, it's gonna be no. So that's, that's my offer.
But you know what? And that's fine too, Susan, but you know what? The biggest thing for me is.
You gotta come up.
Please hear me.
No, you need to have the record.
Come up, yeah, come up to.
In all fairness to me, it is very stressful. I mean, I have, my investors lost money. I lost a lot of money on this property. And, and I don't wanna sit there and, I don't wanna argue with her or argue with anybody about this, because again, it's stressful. But I will tell you this, PG&E came out to the property because of a gas leak and they started digging from the front. They cut from the street and what's gonna cut the line.
Okay, I, we can't argue about that any longer.
Okay, okay, but.
I'm just offering you an opportunity.
Okay, so my last thing, my last.
Sir, please do not argue with the board.
I'm sorry.
We can do this in a way that's respectful, okay?
I'm sorry.
I'm offering a meeting with the, the person who is, is over this department. He's a very logical guy and I think he'll be able to work out the timeline and the situation with PG&E and we'll have a lot more information. So we would be doing this on June 4th, if you're available.
This is as close to a lifeline as you're gonna get today.
I understand, but it's not always about that. It's about for the next person that's, you know, I mean, because it's very, very stressful.
And, and we recognize that.
And then, again, I thought, when the permit, she said, I didn't get in touch with her on the permit because I was, the permit people were coming out and signing it off. So I thought that was my permit.
So we have a motion to continue to June 4th and I believe I heard a second?
Second, Senator.
Okay.
Can we have a time or?
Yeah.
He's in business, he needs to know when to be here.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We can, we can do it at 2:00. Are you okay with that?
2:00 o'clock?
So, June 4th at 2:00 PM.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you rather have it at the end of the day, so it's towards the end of your workday?
It's fine.
Okay, and then sometime in between, you'll get a call to come to a meeting with the planning department and other officials from the county to kind of work out this timeline.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, please, please vote.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, you hold off just one second. Mr. Petrovich, you've turned in a card to speak on an item that was heard this morning. Are you aware of that?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's called a mistake that a rookie would normally make.
You certainly are not that, sir.
Not a rookie.
And I apologize. What I had done is when this matter was continued from before, I simply changed the date and it was scheduled for 2:45 previously, and that's how I ended up here instead of at 9:30. And I throw myself at the mercy of the court. I understand there was no public comment for this matter and it has to do with the Floren Vineyard fees. And I also understand there's a second reading of this matter and so maybe it doesn't become official until then on May 21st.
There were two ordinances, I wasn't here, well, actually I was in the audience this morning, but there were two ordinances, is my memory, that was, that were included in the package and some resolutions. The resolutions would be in effect now, but I, I'm not familiar enough with the item to remember which is which, but the ordinances were continued to the next meeting.
Yeah, the fee, the fee, the fee ordinances were.
The fee ordinances.
Yeah, the fee ordinances, so the fees don't come affected. Resolution approving the plan and the environmental documentation were, those were taken.
Those are, that's in effect.
Right.
Right.
So it's still a part of it that's still pending.
Yeah, I guess what my recommendation would be, Mr. Petrovich, is to get in touch with county council and figure out what recourse you may have, if any, at this point, regarding the, the next meeting.
Regarding the next meeting?
Yes, yes.
So it was continued, was it continued to the 21st? I can't remember the date.
I don't know, it was put over to.
Before the adoption.
I believe it was May 21st.
Yes.
21st?
Before the adoption of the, of the ordinances, yes.
Yes.
I didn't quite understand the two ordinance part, but am I hearing correctly that if I speak to county council, there may be a chance to reopen public comment?
So, may I?
Yes.
So there were a number of items that were included in what the board did this morning and some of them were final actions this morning, but there were the two fee ordinances that were considered this morning and those required two readings. And the second reading is on May 21st. There, so there isn't, that's not final yet. So there is an opportunity still to weigh in on those ordinances. If there's an interest in the board to reopen the rest of it, we would have to, the board would have to decide that you wanted to do that. But if it's just the ordinances, you do have a chance.
So my particular interest is in the amount of fees and the impact on the entire plan, obviously my property included. I don't know where that fits into what was adopted and what was not adopted.
It's a good conversation this morning.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't. I don't know enough without having to look at it.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, 'cause I know you had spoken with me about that and I knew that North Vineyard Station got put over, but I, you know, you own property throughout the, the county, but I thought, because you spoke to me with this, the information you'd talked to me about, the particular property was in the Floren Vineyard Gap piece, if I'm not mistaken. But I was just gonna say that we didn't have any publicity, so we had a good, good robust discussion with the board and with staff. Certainly while we're still in session though, Krista, we can revisit an action we took this morning. I was gonna ask you a question of you, is that if we took an action, we could revisit that before we go out of session today and still have it current, so we could bring it back to the board and then schedule that for next Tuesday, as a full consideration again, which would just, it would delay it for a week or two weeks until we next came in for, as far as the ordinance, I mean, regarding the ordinance.
Have until the, yeah, until the close of business today to do that, if you, if you choose to do that.
And actually, the property is actually in your district, at least the specific piece. Yeah, right, right. So, again, I, I don't know what you intend to put on the record today and obviously we've got other items on the agenda. You know, in light of, you know, what it. know, what it means to everybody, including you, Mr. Petrovich, but a whole lot of other folks, including districts that are waiting for reimbursement, and other developers who've built infrastructure are waiting for reimbursement. But again, if we postpone this till next Tuesday, it would be a little bit out of the ordinary. But we certainly could call it back, I guess, by reconsideration of the motion and, you know, give you that opportunity to weigh in. And, you know, I'm sure my staff's gonna be a little bit chewed up at us about it, but we could do that.
So, here's how big a pain I am. There's only one conference, it's a national conference for the shopping center industry.
Vegas.
And it's on the 21st in Las Vegas, which I hate going to. But I have 14 meetings booked that day in Las Vegas to try to bring more revenue and jobs and sales tax. So, it's, I'm sorry.
So, you're not available that day?
No.
Let me offer this. I guess we could, you know, we've got two other hearing items today. Again, this is certainly up to the board and our schedules and so forth. But we could bring it back. There wasn't any other public that was here that at least spoke today. We could, you know, reopen it today for, you know, take your testimony. It might not change any of the outcome that we already gave direction on. But I, and that's out of the ordinary. I get them to-
It's unusual, but I'm willing, it is a significant project that he's talking about in District 2, I will say.
Can you get transportation staff back here in time?
Infrastructure.
Let's do that, then. We'll take it.
7:30 PM tonight, Paul.
I'm at your mercy. So, 10:00 PM, midnight.
So, let's hear the 2:45 and the 3:00 o'clock, and then see if we can get staff here to-
Yeah, because the Beach Don Lake, we're gonna have some conversation. It's probably, I mentioned, 45 minutes or so, so maybe 4:00 or something. Anyway.
I don't know that it'll take 45 minutes. We've talked pretty exclusively.
Yeah, we have some public testimony. We have some folks talking about flood insurance, a few other things.
Yeah, right.
So, I would suggest that we have a motion to reconsider that's voted on now.
Right now.
And a time that-
Okay, so moved.
Okay, we have to, one makes the motion, has to be one of those either made the first or the second on the-
I'm sorry?
On the reconsideration, it has to be somebody who either made their original motion and/or seconded it. And I, I think I made the motion.
It was the two of us.
Okay, all right. He's made it, I second it, okay, for reconsideration.
All right. So, the chair's making the motion?
Yes.
Okay, to reconsider, and it'll be heard this afternoon at-
After we get done with the 3:00 item.
All right.
So, around 4:00?
Vote on that.
If that, it's 3:40.
We have to vote first.
Yeah.
But if I were you, I wouldn't go very far.
You don't have to go to Vegas, do you, now and then, do you?
Unanimous vote.
Okay.
And what item number that was out, Flo? That was 38, 39?
E9.
39?
39.
Okay. In case anybody's watching and wants to come down and-
Yeah, it's item 39.
Thank you so much.
We're in it for 4:00.
So, now, we'll go to item 46, which is the La Marina Food Mart PCN. It's an ABC license hearing to determine whether public convenience would be served by issuance of a Type 20 beer and wine liquor license to La Marina Food Mart at 4128 El Camino Avenue, Suite A, in the Arden Arcade Community.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I do have a PowerPoint on this item. All right, this is the La Marina Food Mart Public Convenience and Necessity Hearing. The site is 4128 El Camino Avenue, Suite A, in the Arden Arcade Community. And this is a hearing to determine whether public inconvenience and necessity would be served by a Type 20, which is beer and wine license. This is the standard census tract and one-mile radius map that we put in your PCN reports. You can see the site in the center there, and it is approximately a half mile to the nearest other location to buy beer or wine, although there certainly are multiple other locations within the one-mile radius. La Marina Food Mart is an existing convenience store. They're requesting beer and wine. The site is not in high crime, but it is in an over-concentrated census tract. The standard allows for one off-site liquor license within the census tract, and this approval would result in a total of five. Within a one-mile radius, there are 17 establishments, six beer and wine, and 11 beer, wine, and spirits. The Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council considered this and ended up recommending approval on a six-to-one recommendation vote. The sheriff's office is willing to withdraw their opposition, and the applicant has concurred with a number of standard conditions that include no single sales, the limitation on the hours between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and that alcohol must be kept in a securable storage area. And so, staff is recommending approval of this one today. I know, we always try to point out why this one may be distinguished from other requests. Partly, it's not in a high-crime area. It is a half-mile to other establishments. We do have the CPAC advisory recommendation in support. We had mixed community reaction. The CPAC notes indicate that there were four residents opposed and three in support at the CPAC meeting, but there was some support. There's been one additional correspondent that's come in, and we do have the sheriff conditions. So, that is the reasons for staff recommendation today. We do have the applicant here, Mr. Martinez, and he has gathered, he has a list of petitions of people supporting his application that he just showed us immediately prior to the hearing that he wants to submit to the board. So, I just wanted to alert you of that, those materials that he has. Are there any questions?
Right now, is the applicant going to speak?
Is the applicant prepared to speak? Okay.
Hello, good afternoon.
First, could we get your name straight? One, your letter says Miguel Resendez, and the report says Miguel Martinez.
Miguel Martinez Resendez.
Is the correct name?
That's the correct name.
Okay.
Okay, I am not very good on public speaking, so I apologize for that. I, like I said, I'm Miguel Martinez Resendez. I reside at 3866 St. Blart Drive here in Sacramento. Last year, I bought a convenience grocery store, which was more like a smoke shop. My intentions are to change all that. And in fact, I already got rid of all the paraphernalia. But, and then, we are adding a dairy.
I'm sorry, your voice got real low there. Are you, you're by, you want to open a smoke shop, or you're closing the smoke shop?
No, the smoke shop is gone.
Gone, okay.
We got rid of all the paraphernalia in there. So, and now, instead of that, we're, we think the community needs more of groceries, dairy, bread, fruits, vegetables. And those are the items that we're, we're gonna add, or we added already. We already have some. But also, we need other departments to help us pay the rent as well, which is beer and wine. And that's why we're here to see if all the members of the board can approve that.
Okay.
My, I have a lot of experience in retail. I worked for Smart &amp; Final for 20 years. I managed some of the Smart &amp; Final grocery stores. And that's one of the departments, it was my front that I always focused on, checking IDs, making sure that nobody would buy, not only, not only for checks, or, but make sure that no one would buy cigarettes or alcohol underage.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, have you, you've read the requirements of the sheriff's letter?
Yes, I have them.
And you're able to, you can go along with the sheriff's requirements?
Definitely.
Okay. The only thing I would like to see, not really added, but I'd recommend, is that you, that you police the parking lot of trash. You've got a, you know, a pretty good storefront there. Make sure, people come into convenience stores and maybe eat and toss their wrappers.
They always do.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And are there any other questions for him? No, done. Okay. Then, I would recommend moving ahead with the finding of public convenience and necessity.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I have no cards from the public. Is that correct? Okay, please vote.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Unanimous vote.
Next item.
Item 47 is the report back on flood mitigation for the Point Pleasant area.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson. Staff was asked to report back on a number of measures for flood mitigation in the Beach Don Lake area, some based on just an update of existing activities and some suggested additional ideas for flood mitigation. I'm gonna briefly touch on those that are in the staff report. I really think that the conversation's gonna be driven by questions from the board, particularly Supervisor Natale, and as well, we've got-
I gave you a briefing, Michael, so you know.
Yes, thank you. We do have some residents from the Point Pleasant area. We do also have staff from Water Resources, I think County OES as well, to speak to some details on some of the aspects of flood mitigation activities in the area. In December, we had met with your board, and that's where we were directed to come back. And so, what I'd like to do is just give you an update on some of the activities that have been ongoing. The McCormick-Williamson tract was a project that was initiated after the 2017 storm. And the levees on that island failed. The nature conservancy at the time agreed to repair the levees at a lower elevation to maintain some level of flood benefit for the Point Pleasant community to the north. Part of that, the county agreed to contribute up to $400,000 for future dewatering costs, should there be a similar failure in the interim years. This was, this was basically a commitment as an incentive to help TNC keep the levees lowered and not bring them back up to the original height before they were damaged in the 2017 storms. Since that time, the nature conservancy is no longer leading the conservation project for the McCormick-Williamson tract. The state's taken that over. The agreement that we had to, you know, ideally provide those funds in the future is no longer applicable. However, we have had conversations even last week with State DWR, indicating that we are committed to working with them. We would like to have them find a balanced solution that would continue to provide a benefit for the Beach Don Lake Point Pleasant area in terms of what they're going to do ultimately with the levees on McCormick-Williamson tract. The $400,000 is not spent. It's still in the fund that we maintain. But the key is that, as the ownership of that conservation project has changed, we are in communication. We've got commitment from the state to include us in discussions to ensure that local needs and local stakeholders' needs are brought into their, into their project planning activities. I think in the next few weeks, we will be having a meeting face-to-face with state staff as well to continue the discussions. The idea, again, is to make sure that we can reap a benefit from whatever the state proposes with the McCormick-Williamson tract. Flood warning and evacuation, there was some suggestion of developing a system for the Beach Don Lake Point Pleasant area. The county did establish a communication system, flood warning system, 10 years ago. For the Beach Don Lake area, includes notifications by email. It's a website. There's a system called Everbridge, which actually puts phone calls out to a geographic area that's designated in advance of storm events, in advance of emergency events. So, this is, this is part of the standard protocol that Office of Emergency Services uses for emergency planning, preparedness in advance of primarily storm events, because that's what we typically see in Sacramento County in terms of emergencies. Response and evacuation is also prioritized across the county by the Office of Emergency Services, depending on what the event is, in the context of the event, in the context of what's actually going on at that time. Water Resources participates in the EOC. We provide information and advice to Office of Emergency Services in advance of events that we anticipate, so that they can identify resource needs, actions that the county would need to take in terms of preparing residents to respond to floods, giving them a direction on how to prepare evacuation routes, availability of sandbags and other resources. So, it's not, it's not that we haven't done it. This has actually been in place for a number of years. We identified some triggers as far as water surface elevations in various locations of the watershed that would help guide the process of communication to the community in advance of higher flood waters. Home elevation is another ongoing activity that we've been undertaking. And I think we've come to you several times, indicating that we were waiting, waiting and waiting for our home elevation grants to finally be approved. We had two grants that were finally approved last month. So, now, we've actually got, and George Booth can provide some details. We've got a number of candidates who are on the list who are actively ready to elevate. We've got contractors that we've communicated with who are interested and prepared to do the work. Staff has done the footwork in terms of the permitting process to make sure that we can make it as smooth as possible for elevation candidates as they're progressing a permit through the, through the system. This approach is what we've taken since 1995, as we've successfully administered 100 home elevation projects across the county using grant funds. So, we're gonna continue that approach, doing everything we can to run interference, streamline the process. And this is, this is, this is not greasing the skids in the fence. This is staff walking through the process with homeowners to make sure that, one, they understand what they need to do, and, two, to make sure that there aren't any impediments in the county process for them to get permits going and to get elevations happening. Home elevation is, you know, is a recommended approach to mitigating potential flood risk in the Beach Don Lake area, as well as in any other flood plain in the county, because it's, provides the most certainty. It gets the house up above the flood plain. And we've got, I think, 123 Beach Don Lake properties. 25 are currently on the list. We've got 89 across the county that are interested in home elevation. And with the two current elevation grants, most of the candidates are not in the Beach Don Lake area. We've got candidates across the county who are gonna be elevating their homes to protect them from flooding. And again, George Booth can provide some detail on the program, the numbers, locations, et cetera. There's been a discussion of flow adjustments as a means to mitigate flooding. And a flow adjustment ostensibly would mean paying for permission or paying for the right to flow water across a property. And that's a case, a case where that has been done, is look at the yellow bypass. There's, you have agriculture activities there, but you have a point where the state will need to direct water through that facility to peel off some flood volume. There's agreements in place that anticipate that and allow that. That's a situation where flow adjustments in, you know, in staff's determination. And as I said, we look at it, that's where it makes sense. Here, we would really like to use the funds in the Beach Don Lake's accounts to actually provide some protection via supporting elevations and BURMs and other projects, as we've discussed in the past. Flow adjustments don't appear upon the review to really make sense in terms of addressing protection from the flood events. It may be a means to provide some financial mechanism, but we do that through the Beach Don Lake insurance subsidies as well. So, I'm not sure that it, the flow adjustment itself provides any additional benefit, or is really in the context of what we're trying to do with, with the Beach Don Lake's funding in terms of flood protection and mitigation. And then, I think that there's probably an area of discussion. There are two funds that we currently have. Fund 314A, which was a developer contribution towards flood mitigation. And then, we have an impact fee, the Beach Don Lake Impact Fee, 315X. We continue to use those in support of our home elevation program to give some relief from the local cost share for Beach Don Lake's residents, for their share of the elevation project. There's two additional funds, 105A and 105C, which we've discussed in the past. Those are Laguna Creek Ranch and Elliott Ranch South funds. They're not cited in the staff report, only in that there's, there's some lack of- They're not cited in the staff report, only in that there's some lack of clarity on exactly what that money could be used for. We'd like it to be able to be used for flood projects such as levy fixes. That's what the original intent was. We'd like to be able to use it to support home elevation or any other alternative projects. But there's been a difficulty in clearly identifying, looking through the documentation with those two development projects, exactly what that money's to be used for, aside from work on Lambert Road. We'd like to get clarity on that. And as Supervisor Anatoli and I have discussed, we need to get clarity on that so we can, one, be assured that we have latitude to use it for other areas, and, two, that it's not beholden to the city to say yea or nay on how we use it. There's some consultation with the city because the city does have the ultimate responsibility for how it's used because the mitigation funds were derived from development that's now in the city. But the intent for staff is to get clarity and get determination that we have the ability to use that for any number of measures that the board would deem appropriate in terms of mitigating the flooding in the Beach Stone Lake area. And I know that's been raised in the past with the board. And I think we're in agreement that we need to get clarity. We don't have the specific information that makes it clear determination. So we're working with county council and, I think, planning. Our intent is to do that. Again, I think the discussion will be driven a lot by the questions that come from Supervisors Anatoli. I know we'll have some folks speaking here at the podium. And if there's any details on home elevation or the other aspects of flood mitigation in the Beach Stone Lakes area, we'd be more than happy to give that information.
Okay, Supervisor Anatoli.
Yep. Well, thank you, Michael. And I did spend a good deal of time, and Michael did with me as well, last week and went through, after I'd had a chance to, again, revisit this with some of the area residents and some who are in the audience today, obviously, but with others as well. I wanted to just maybe capture that, the point that Michael was hitting on last, and then I'll back up to some specific questions regarding our efforts down there. This issue regarding the funds that were set aside, there was a communication to our board early in February, and it was in response to inquiry that had been made last December. But all members of the board got a copy of it. And it relates to funding that was set aside, now on funds 105A and C. In the one fund, there's some $2-plus million, and I'm not sure the amount in the other.
A little over a million. It's a little over a million. About 1.1 million.
1.1 million and 2 million, so it was about 3...
Yeah.
3.3. So about $3 million that was set aside under conditions of approval, going back to the late '80s, early '90s. And I guess the determination, or at least the opinion's been offered now, that the approach that this board, albeit with lots of discussion and certainly maybe some differences amongst board members about approaches, has been to focus in on either utilizing home elevations and/or berms or floodwalls are still an acceptable measure that was approved by this board in June of 17. But my concern is that now this money, by virtue of what's been offered or proffered, is being escrowed and it's being said that home elevation is not included, or potentially not included as a part of that. We have no physical project. This board is not pursued for a variety of reasons. The raise of Lambert Road, the sub-90 improvements, which would involve the City of Sacramento a number of years ago. We looked at an 11F, which would have put a ring levy around a good portion of the Point Pleasant and some of the Franklin Pond area. So all those have been pursued, looked at, and for a variety of reasons, engineering, downstream opposition, concerns by this board about liability, whatever it might be, have been ruled out. So here we are now with a much narrower focus on what we can offer to residents and landowners in the Point Pleasant area specifically, and money that had been set aside specifically because of upstream impacts of development that raised the water surface elevation in certain flood events, particularly in the Morrison Creek Basin, were attributed. They were done through the SECA process. And actually, I was reading through the conditions on one of the projects back in 1992, and to the discussion that Michael offered relative to flow adjustments. We talked about compensation, the board at the time did, of property owners affected structures for damages resulting from increased flood elevations, floodproofing structures, floodproofing of individual structures clustered together. And those were all part of the zoning agreements. And I guess we've had some difficulties since a lot of those records were transferred to the City of El Grove in trying to locate the MMRPs, the mitigation monitoring report profiles, but reports. But nonetheless, this board spent hours and hours, even prior to my election to this board, in talking about downstream impacts and then doing, I think, some pretty thorough examination of what those impacts might be, and then providing some mitigation in that development, albeit it wasn't in its entirety, but provided in the form of funding that was made in good faith to the county. And now we're being told that we cannot potentially use it for where the county has brought the focus to. And so, again, Krista, you may have been the one that's been looking at this, but I think it needs, to Michael's point, and that's why I wanted to hit on this one, is that needs to be figured out. It's one thing about having to touch base with the City of El Grove, but these folks, all these properties on the unincorporated area of the county, they're not going to be in any city probably ever. And I think that to say now that we've got money that's basically escrowed and where this board has come to focus on is on home elevation and floodwalls or berms, that we can't use it for those purposes, then that puts us at a real stalemate. So I guess I raised the issue in this arena because that may be the legal interpretation of this, but going back to the policy configuration behind this, and there was some financing that was done, I think it needs to get sorted out because that's $3 million that can be available to assist landowners and residents of areas that have been affected and will continue to be affected, pretty much forever, no matter what our efforts are with upstream development, because of the volume of water that, under certain flood situations, will impact Point Pleasant from the north. And so I guess I pose that question. We may not have an answer today, and I don't know if you want to get into it, but that is certainly high on the list for report back because basically, a little less than half of the money that we have available and for the things we're trying to do and assist homeowners with is now, has a question mark around it. And so, again, I appreciate our staff. I know Mike, Ben Rose, and Michael Peterson both, again, I trust Krista or others have taken some look at this, but I'm concerned that we leave this question mark. It needs to get some definition around it. And maybe by July 1st, Michael, you could have it figured out.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I'm talking to Mike here.
You? Any Mike? Yeah, I've already teed up that conversation with LeAnn Moffett. Because I agree it's necessary to get absolute clarity. There was no definitive determination that we couldn't use it. There was a lack of clarity that it would be available for elevation or other things that would be considered alternative projects. So I think that that's the nature of what we need to clarify. There's certainly no conceding that the funds are at the discretion of the city. We do recognize that there has to be at least some consultation before they're used, just to ensure that we don't proceed down a path that we may be compromised later. But working with council and planning and others, I actually agree so. So over the next few months, that's a path that we need to specifically take to get to resolution on that.
All right. That's very important. So then I'll just work back on that. And I know we have some folks for public testimony, Mr. Chair, so I won't go real long here. But I think along with that, as we look back to the financing, to the conditions of approval for the developments, the environmental documents, the mitigation monitoring reports, and wherever those responsibilities may lie, I think it's going to be important, and I guess I would ask this as a part of the future report back, because again, a lot of time has passed and we're now 30 years in, in some cases, on some of these discussions, if not longer, obviously going back to origins of some of the flood impacts back in the '60s and '70s. But I think a chronology would be very, very useful for everybody involved that memorializes these conditions of approval and maybe their evolution over time. And we have a lot of that. If it's not in our planning files, it's got to be in the board files. These projects were of the scale and scope that they came before the Board of Supervisors. And I think as it relates to proposed mitigations and the evolution of those discussions, again, with the efforts by this board and by the county and Department of Water Resources to look at ways to address flooding in this area of the county, I think that would be a very important piece of information that would be useful here and now, but also going forward in the future. So I would ask that respectfully of our staff. It would require a bit of work, but I do think it would be helpful to all the parties involved. So let me just talk a little bit about the practicality since we last visited this in December. And Michael, I appreciate the effort, and certainly George Booth and others on your staff, Cheyenne and others have put forth and certainly responding to questions, but also in working with individual property owners relative to their properties and providing some flood protection should they choose to enter the elevation program and/or look at floodwalls or berms. But I guess part of the, and you spoke to it, and we talked a lot about this the other day, I think part of the challenge still is that the, I think, the process is not really user-friendly. This isn't a criticism of the county staff, but with the FEMA grants, and we waited a long time, and you talked about that, and we've gotten the nod that we can include some of the properties in this area should they choose to in this current round. But what is still, I think, puts on the property owners is that they've got to be out of their homes for seven or eight months, which are largely rural properties. Some have animals and other agricultural aspects to them. There is no provision for what people do in the interim. It also requires that they expend a good deal of money on either architecture and/or getting some design elements put together that would allow them to process a permit that's on their dollar. Some of that would be reimbursable under our program. And it requires them to get three bids under the FEMA rules. And I think in the current environment, it's great that there's some folks that said they might be interested in helping people do this, but getting all that information together, doing it in the season, that makes sense, is no small undertaking. And again, it may be the same elsewhere in the county, but in some of the suburban settings, it may be a little easier because of the access to the property and/or some of the workarounds relative to utilities and such. And one other thing that's been brought to my attention has been the whole harmless, that that kind of comes at the end of the arrangement, that should they enter into the FEMA program and actually elevate with the FEMA grant, obviously some money put in by the homeowner and then us putting in at least a half of the match in the stormwater utility in the Beach Stone Lakes area. That whole harmless is a pretty standard document, but one, I think, that raises some questions, and we may hear from some folks today about that. Would we still cover flood insurance for Beach Stone Lakes? Because again, a lot of these properties still have outlying accessory structures, and their wells and septics are all on their own dime. And we do have obviously funding set aside for that, but I think some policy direction, as you and I talked about, as relates to not just the whole harmless, but what insurance would be provided for in the event that somebody entered the home elevation program in the Beach Stone Lakes area. So that's, I guess, a question, but maybe you can offer some insight, or George can, as to some of the practical things that are being counted out there in the field as we focused on the home elevation. I did want to offer two other comments along those lines, and that is that initially, when we went into this a couple of years ago in the summer of 2017, we didn't know we'd qualify for the FEMA grant. We wanted to encourage the home elevation, and so we were going to offer $75,000 from the Beach Stone Lakes fund, and then it would be on the homeowner or property owner to make up the other full quarter, $25,000. Now that we have FEMA eligibility and we're offering $12,500 of the $25,000 match, and I guess I'd like us for discussion purposes and to talk about this. We have set aside funding. It's not stormwater utility. It's money for mitigation. And I think either maybe individual escrow accounts as folks enter the program to assist them with some of those upfront costs that I mentioned, but also look at whether or not we could cover the full match in this case. Again, I recognize that's not the way we're approaching the stormwater utility, but again, we have dollars set aside specifically for this geographical area of the county. And that will require policy direction from this board. And again, we're not prepared, I guess, to do that today, but I'd like to have that come back to us because I think that would be a factor in certainly encouraging folks to consider this strongly. And then I guess the other issue I wanted to raise for today's purposes is that in addition to Point Pleasant, we have other areas that are outside the stormwater utility, and there are probably a few in the north area, but either in the Delta or in the Franklin Pond area where they have no ability to garner any match, either because they're not in the Beach Stone Lakes basin or they're not in the stormwater utility where we offer at least half of the match. And I guess I'd like to, for some future discussion, maybe with the report back, to have a conversation. And again, how we fund that, I'm not certain, but if we're encouraging home elevation, we need to have areas in the Wilton area, in the Delta, and in the Franklin Pond area, just across Franklin Boulevard that...
And Arden Arcade.
Yep, Arden Arcade. And so wherever those are at. But in the stormwater utility, though, in Arden Arcade, they actually do get half the match, if I'm not mistaken, correct? These areas are not eligible for any match at all, Susan. That's why I wanted to raise the issue, is that there's no matching incentive in those areas. And so there are, and maybe out in the north here, I don't know if in some of the areas, Alberta, Rio Linda, where they're not in the stormwater utility. So again, recognizing that we are offered a match in either Beach Stone Lakes and/or in a large geographic portion of the county, including Arden Arcade, but we don't offer it in certain areas of the county. So I'd like us to take a look at that. I think that's enough on my end, but you're going to hear some other comments. I did want to point out, and I did to you in the staff report, I don't know if the correction was made, there was a pretty important word left out on page three.
Yeah. The correction did not get made, but I think the intent of the overall section was clear. But no, the staff report itself, the correction didn't get made in time, but...
Okay. I just wanted to be sure because it says it does establish...
There's a missing "not."
Does not.
There's a missing "not."
You may want to point that, yeah. In fact, I'll just read it into the record on page four, second paragraph. The presence of a floodplain on a property, it says, "does establish the need for a flow adjustment on that property," and clearly the intent does not establish the need, even though folks might want us to seek a flow adjustment, but, okay.
So yeah, let me just speak to some of those, understanding that you'd like to see us revisit those and report back, which is fully anticipated anyhow. Those are the price. But in terms of, you know, non-Beach Stone Lake areas not having access either to Beach Stone Lake matching funds for their local share or stormwater utility, I think what it gets down to is identifying another funding source. If the county, if the board wants to establish that contribution to the local match for elevation candidates that are not in an area that's got other alternative funding, it's going to come down to what is the appropriate funding source. Utility's not appropriate. Beach Stone Lakes not appropriate outside of the area it was established for. So that's really what it comes down to, is what's the potential obligation and where does that money come from? So I don't think the concept is difficult. It's going to be identification of the funding, and that's something that I think is beyond Water Resources Department. But anyhow, I think that's, I just wanted to speak to that. And flood insurance, sort of the policy discussion, when do you sunset? Does it make sense to elevate using funds to get somebody above the floodplain where their insurance is pretty much to the minimum and continue to pay it? The idea was that the insurance subsidies would be provided until some sort of project was put in place. Now, we look at that on an individual basis, that project could well be considered the elevation itself. And then after that point, do you ask, well, from this point, the subsidy or the insurance premiums are much lower because the house is elevated, but now that falls on the homeowner to bear in the future, knowing that their risk of flooding is far diminished because of the elevation, and that's a significant benefit? So that's where that policy discussion goes. As we've stated before, we have a limited amount of funding, and it will be difficult to use it to fund elevation, fund berms and other activities, and continue to pay what is a drastically increasing insurance premium through the NFIP. And we've discussed that it's increasing, doubling and tripling over time to where it's going to be quite unbearable. So the funding is not in any way have the capacity to be sustaining in perpetuity in terms of paying insurance. And we would not want to establish something that would compromise our ability to utilize it for flood mitigation projects now. But again, we've hinted to...
You can give us some analysis around that, though. You can give us some analysis around that, though, kind of what the projections are.
Yes, because we've got, you know, 10 different ways we can go with this pot of money, and we've got to narrow it down so that we can make the appropriate analysis in this context, let's approach it this way, we're going to do these three things, and at a certain point we'll sunset it, flood insurance. And I think we have that discussion so that we get clarity, because otherwise it is quite nebulous, and there's a lot of, you know, potentials and possibilities, but we've got to be able to limit that scope so that we can actually identify how far we can extend the use of the funding. But again, we've touched on it before, that there's some, there's a need to, you know, have that policy discussion.
Okay.
And then again, I'll just reiterate, that our intent and desire is to get full clarity on the usability of the 105A and C funds, and that would be something that we would come back to your board with, with a determination, and track that information down. I think that might have been-
And the chronology of the mitigation-
Which will be beneficial for, you know, we've got, I think we've done that in the past, but I think that it's appropriate to, you know, take a fresh look at that, so that it sets that stage for how I see us moving into the next phase, where we actually start getting homes elevated, I think we're going to be in a different scenario than we have been, and I honestly expect this, once we start having homes go up, that we're going to see an increase in interest in that area, in elevating homes, because I think it does provide that assurance, and I think that changes, I think that changes the mindset of residents, and I think it changes our perspective on how we can best utilize the funding. But again, we'll include that information in our next report back. So I don't know if there's any other questions specifically about elevation, and George is here, he knows the ins and outs of the grants, I know we do have some folks from the community who would like to speak.
You may want to hear from folks first.
Yeah, I do have one card, Walt Hoppe.
In this handout, there's basically six questions that I would like addressed in writing. That doesn't have to be done now, you've covered some of that, some of those to some degree, but for clarification for both the board members and the residents out there, I think we should have this addressed in writing. To me, the home elevation project is just a Band-Aid on a far bigger problem. The new flood elevations that are coming down from FEMA in that area are putting a large area, the urban population in the south county, they'll be in the floodplain, the whole pocket area, the Laguna developments, and so something far bigger than the home elevation has to be done out there. And I think both the county and the city, and the city of Elk Grove, and the state have to get together and look at the big problem, and that will take, if that project ever gets built, it'll take care of a whole lot of these issues, and then you won't need home elevation and all these little Band-Aid projects that we've been doing, and I think the emphasis should be put on that, because like I say, there's thousands of homes in the pocket area that are impacted by this new flood elevation. So are you going to raise the levies higher, are we going to raise the reclamation district levies higher? Are we going to do a project like the North Delta project that lowered the water surface elevation and benefited the whole area? And I think that's a lot wiser thing to do than this continually raising houses, levies, and such. So that's about all I have to say, except I would like these issues addressed. I think you talked about a number of them here today, but for clarification, takes some time, and I'd like them addressed in writing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's the only card I have, is there any other member of the public that would like to address this issue at this time? Board?
I'm hearing, how can we flood and we show the water? Is there is a caveat here that the government puts the money into this, and then we have that money not being used? Now, when money is not being used, money is money, and when money is not being used, it's sitting somewhere in the bank. Where the audit should show that now, if that money is not being used, we should be able to show the difference on a quarterly basis, so that we can use that money to employ people into other things, into train folks. Now, when you talk about the flood, I had recommended along the levy, that you use the plastic pipes. Use the plastic pipes, and that will strengthen the lever all the way down to so many million gallons of water, when you need it back, pump it back over to the river, and it'll run wet and run. Now, that's some of the things, when you change this river from running here down by 14, in the telephone company, and you put it over here, this is a problem that you have. You blocked a vein on that river. When you've got high-rise and blocking veins, you're going to have problems. Look at our wells. What do you have to refurbish a well, other than suck the sand or punch it deeper? That's all. That's all you can do to a well. I grew up with wells. That's all you can do with wells, is suck the sand out or punch it deeper. And we've got all these problems of flooding and flooding and flooding, and you've got some language of what is flooding and what is not flooding, you should have this place packed with people here, to hear what we say here today about flooding. We're going to have flooding zones because you didn't utilize the core engineers when you was building. You know Elk Grove's a swamp, but you went on and built in it. You knew that all the time. Well, you go anywhere to the Delta, that's a swamp, because that's where you run that water for farming. People, please, try to get the public to understand what you're saying here today.
Thank you, sir. Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had one question, Mr. Booth, if I could, and it has to do with the, I think Michael touched on it, but in the staff report on page seven, it talks about, of the 123 addresses, talks about three-quarters or more of those being in different statuses there. Could you clarify, because it came to me, and I mentioned this to Michael, that we don't show those numbers, you know, are these countywide versus Beachstone Lakes, and if they're Beachstone Lakes, can you just, we're talking about 26 are on high ground, 24 haven't allowed staff in, 25 are currently in grant applications, do we actually have 25 in the Beachstone Lakes area that are in grant applications?
Thank you, Don, I'm George Booth, Water Resources. There's 123 houses that we, 123 structures, so the rule on the Beachstone Lake flood insurance subsidy program from 1999, the temporary program since 1999, was that we would subsidize the flood insurance for the primary structure on any of the 123 parcels in Beachstone Lake, which extends up to River Road, the little triangle area, south of Freeport, all the way down to, and including RD 1002. And there's 123 houses. I've reached out to every single property owner multiple times, and here's the current count. There are 31 who have sent me a statement of interest to elevate their house using a FEMA grant. There are 12 that need vents in order to significantly reduce their flood insurance, several of them are working on that now, or they will do that. So the rule is, this is kind of a weird rule, but it's, you know, it's federal, so of course it's a little bit off. If your floor is safely above the floodplain, but you don't have at least one square inch of flood vents in the foundation for every square foot of floor, then your insurance is rated as if the ground under your house is your lowest floor. So here's an example, there's an example on Point Pleasant Road, where I was able to help the couple add a vent, and it reduced their flood insurance from $2,950 to $420, just by adding one vent. So, I mean, that's a win. We have-
Did you install it for them?
No, I don't want to be a blessing hog and do all the work. There are 23 homeowners out there who still have yet to allow us to survey the elevation of the floors, so we don't have any idea what they need. There are 16 in what I call the other category, some people, such as the church, the Methodist church, is talking to us about a flood wall, some people just simply need their basement filled. There are two houses that I'll be coming back to talk to you about pretty soon that we're considering raising with a Z, and some people want a flood wall, because-
You mean tearing them down, like that you're saying with a Z?
Yeah, well, I'll talk to you later about that. So I don't want to share addresses, because I don't think that's fair in a public forum, but, yet. There are 28 homes that don't even require flood insurance, but they're in the program, we're paying flood insurance for them, and there's 13 more who I've reached out to multiple times who should elevate, but for one reason or another, I've actually spoken with several of them, you know, they don't want to do it, and that's fine, we're not forcing anybody, I'm certainly not overselling this program, it kind of sells itself for the people that are interested, and we did a town hall meeting, just side note, but we did a town hall meeting last Thursday in Hood, and 20 people signed up that night. I mean, that's how fast this is going. I think we're going to elevate a lot of houses with these grant programs over the next several years. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, I tried to write the numbers after you gave them, so if you could send a brief note, make sure I got it captured, the universe here, but again, I think it certainly reflects a lot of efforts on your part and those that assist you, and I appreciate you're very dedicated to it. I would just say that, you know, folks need to protect themselves, but even in the community of Hood, if all those folks raise their houses, you can imagine it's a pretty odd-looking landscape, because we're probably, what, 16, 18, 20-foot elevation there, and you had houses that are at ground level.
So the town hall meeting on Thursday was at the firehouse, and there's a newer home right across the street from the firehouse, it's properly elevated, and it's beautiful.
And it's on two and a half, three acres, too. That's the difference, I mean, you've got a township that's laid out in an old grid, and their houses are next to each other, so, I mean, ideally, it's, again, I'm not, we can debate that, but that house was new, that's probably the first, one of maybe two new houses in Hood in the last 25 years, and again, because they had property to build on. And I just think that, you know, it really alters the landscape, provides flood protection, I get it, but to the point that Walt made, and I think, you know, we do need to focus some of our efforts with the state, they decertified all those levies along the Sacramento River, and have put people in deep, deep floodplains by virtue of that, and the chances that we'll ever get levy improvements to the level of the protection that was once at least calculated, and I think is actually probably closer to the truth than 14-year protection, which to me is absolutely ridiculous, to think the levies along the Sacramento River have now been, you know, but I would just, I think it's important, because again, we have communities, and to carry those communities, and when you talk about raising houses, that means if people don't rebuild, then you've just depopulated a rural community by two less families. And that's, you know, not unimportant, and I would just say that, as someone who represents a large part of rural portions of this county, that having inhabitants, people who farm, who live, hopefully live in safety, and when we talk about that, it may address one issue, but I think it goes to the bigger fabric of communities like Hood and Point Pleasant and other Delta communities, and again, it takes nothing away from your good work, George, I know you're very sincere and very committed, and you're helping people, but I would just say, that's always a consideration for this member of the board, and I think for those of us that talk about it, that, you know, you have communities made up of people who live there, raise their families there, and you want them to be safe, but you also want them to be vibrant, thriving communities, and if people leave there and never come back, then, you know, what's left? Anyway, that's all I had, George, and thanks for your, I don't have any other questions. And Mr. Chair, I would just, you know, thank our staff for the report back, we have some questions here today, I think a lot of them go along the lines, because I'd had those discussions, both with Michael and with some of the folks, if we could get answers to those, and then maybe have a report back before the winter season on this, with I think it's going to take a little bit of work for some of this information to be assimilated, but particularly on the funding, as I raised earlier, and Michael spoke to it, getting some clarity around that, because that helps to fuel some of what we want to try to do down in this area of the county.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? It's receive and file, and so we will have a report back in the future. Thank you. Now, if I move back, am I correct, to item 39?
Right, so now we're going to call in item 39, which is the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program Implementation. Environmental determination is exempt, this is the approval of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fee Program and the new Sacramento County Transportation Development Fee Schedule. You are introducing an ordinance adding Chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for Establishment of the Florin Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption. You're introducing a second ordinance amending Chapter 16.83, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code, revising the Vineyard Fee Program boundaries, waiving reading and continuing to May 21st for adoption.
Okay, thank you, and I think since we actually heard the pretty extensive staff report this morning, that we should probably go directly to public comment, which Paul Petrovich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and the rest of the board for allowing me to speak and go through the dynastics here. One just has to sit here for a few minutes and realize the scope and complexity of what you guys deal with, it's crazy. And I sit here and I recognize the challenge that we're faced with, with infrastructure for the county, and how these fees are derived, and how we need them in order, or we need the improvements in order to meet general plan requirements to not have our traffic levels below standard, or at level F. And I think there's even a mandate under some laws that you maintain it that way. So I'm not here to sit here and just complain about fees, that's not my goal. My goal is to bring a little bit of a real-world interpretation of what these fees mean to the entire 5,000 acres, including the land that I bought for $4 million 15 years ago that I've been unable to develop. For the life of me, I don't know why the room was packed this morning, and I suspect I barely caught wind of this when it first hit the website, and I suspect there's going to be a lot of homeowners, and I think Mr. Natoli might know, Supervisor Natoli, I'm sorry, may know a lot of these property owners, and they're not sophisticated, they own ranchettes, and they've been holding on to these properties for generations, and I think I have the evidence to prove that what they thought was maybe going to be an inheritance, or what was going to be some equity in their land to pass on, what have you, is going to be gone, because just for the residential alone, we're looking at $431,000 per acre, just in fees. That doesn't count anything else. On a shopping center, $36 per square foot. $36 a square foot, the average in the region is somewhere between 16 and 18. So what this fee program is doing in essence is wiping out, well, it's creating less, it's creating negative land value for most of the properties out there, if not all of them, and the goal of having these properties developed to create the money to improve the infrastructure won't occur. It certainly won't occur on any large scale. So I've been trying to bring this message forward, so that we all realize what we're doing here, and I think there's a simple analysis that can take place to deal with this and understand the impact. I think the way the fees have been derived was to take what is needed to be built, and then spread those fees out over the properties. But I don't think there's been an analysis of what a home would sell for- But I don't think there's been an analysis of what a home would sell for, or what rents would be derived in a retail project, and do the reverse math, a reversionary analysis, to what it does to the land value. And I'm not talking about land value in the form of profit, but does the land value go below zero? And in my analysis, it does, not by a small amount, by many dollars per square foot, by hundreds of thousands per acre. And so, we're all for infill. We're all for creating communities within existing boundaries. But this is going to do nothing but force more greenfield development. This is going to force more things to occur outside the boundaries of the gap plan. And without that reversionary analysis, I think looking at this only from one direction of what it's going to take to solve some of these infrastructure problems is short-sighted. Now, we happen to be in an upmarket right now, and Lennar is out there building, of course. But what is not known to many people is Lennar bought foreclosed lots at $10,000 per lot during the downturn. No one else has that opportunity anymore. So, the first thing I think, well, not the first, but one thing to consider is if we want retail services to be included in this 5,000-acre plan besides the Walmart, there needs to be an adjustment so this works. And retail's being devastated right now, as we know. There won't be any... I had Target interested, ready to go sign contract to purchase 10 acres on my 37 acres at Gerber and Elk Grove Floren. And then the gap plan, I was asked to stop and be included in the gap plan. And that was 15 years ago. And so, I'm sitting here now, Target's no longer interested. They haven't closed any stores, but they're not building any stores. So, I'm relegated to, if it worked, 10,000-square-foot shop building, a gas station, God forbid, a fast-food pad. That's it. So, as I pivoted and looked at alternative land uses for my 37 acres, I started to look at residential. And when I see the fees come in at $86,000 per home in an area that is not Roseville, it's not Folsom, it's not the better parts of Elk Grove, where you have well-thought-out communities, where there's open space, where there are schools planned in a manner that work better than they do here, where they are near high-dollar, high-level of employment centers that people want to be part of. And those plans don't have existing housing stock that was built in the '60s, '70s, and '80s that wasn't done, that was done under a time period in the county where there wasn't a review process, a design review process. What it all equates to is you have lower home values for a finished new home that doesn't support the fee structure. Adopting a bad fee program right now, although getting something done to where some people can get some reimbursements, I think is extremely bad policy and advocating the responsibility of making sure this fee program works for all 5,000 acres going forward for the decades it's going to take to build it out. And that's going to include good economic times and bad. So, the one simple request I have, we've waited this long, let's stop, it won't take long, to do an analysis from a reversionary analysis to make sure all the people that have purchased land out there or held on to it for generations don't wake up a year from now and realize that they don't have any equity, and there's nobody buying their property, or if they're coming in, they're offering them a fraction of what it's worth or was worth, and that there be some market input relative to what's right. Because this 5,000 acres will not ever be realized under this fee schedule. And that's speaking as a 40-year developer who understands these numbers inside and out. I did create a chart of the comparable retail. I don't know if that can be zoomed in on. And I created the existing permit fees per square foot for retail and a few residential building fees. And basically, you can see the $86,280 for the Floren Vineyard Plan. And City of Woodlands, about $27,000. City of Sacramento, Crocker Village, it's $45,000 to $55,000, and those just went up from $35,000. So, as you can see, it says $451,000 per acre, and that's at five per acre. And apartments don't pencil here, period. So, again, I apologize for not being here this morning. I simply think there should be one more step in this analysis before it's adopted, and that is to run the numbers backwards and see where we end up.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Paul, sometimes when we go through these fees, you find out that different jurisdictions have different costs in the total. So, it's hard for me... I mean, I believe what you wrote, different city of Sacramento, that they could be at roughly $40,000 a unit, and we're at $86. Others, that doesn't compute to me.
Well, I can address that.
Okay.
In areas like Roseville and other areas, you see much higher fees. But there are these well-planned communities that demand and get higher...
You always build well-planned communities, Paul.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Supervisor. I try. But the point is, if you think about Roseville and some of its areas where there's those nice green belts with the trees and the streets that, you know, have a lot of landscaping, and they have entry features for each community, those homes sell for $800, $900,000. This part of the county will never see, well, relative to today's value, I don't see that as being the market, and they can afford $75,000, $80,000 per house. But these fees are akin to having a master plan with all the streets, roads, everything built. On my property alone, I have another $3.5 million in frontage improvements, only which a few hundred thousand dollars is reimbursable under this plan. So, I have another $3 million on top of these fees just to start the in-tracks, just to start the onsite work. And most of the gap plan, of the Floren Vineyard Plan, is exactly that way. It's very rural in nature.
Yeah, I understand that. I mean, I'm just looking at the city. I just, it's hard for me to understand that. I know they just did Delta Shores. I don't know if they updated their fee program for that. That's a huge development.
Even Sacramento County has lower fees in different areas.
Lower fees where?
For example, the retail in Fair Oaks, I'm sorry, Hazel Madison. I'm paid... If you look at the fourth line down, I paid $22 a square foot, but all the street improvements were in. All the utilities were there. Everything was done.
Yeah.
That's not the case here. So, again, yes, 100%, you're a developer. You understand that apples and oranges are not always the case when people just blurt out fees. I think it's important, you're kind of making the point in that we need to look at the specifics of this plan, what the market is for these homes, and subtract from it the fixed hard cost of what it takes to build a home, what the fees are, what the architectural costs are, civil engineering. It's $40,000 to finish a lot today.
No, but you could, I mean, are you suggesting that we would have a view in building new neighborhoods that this is in a nice area, so their fees are $86,000, and we know this is never going to be nice over here, so it's $40,000?
No. I'm saying to take the comparable sales comps that exist in this area and then subtract out the cost to build a home, or the cost to build retail at those rents. And you could compare them to Roseville, Folsom, Elk Grove, and do the same analysis and see how the residual, the reversionary value is on the land. There's value in the land in those other communities. Here, it goes below and turns into a negative land value.
Okay. Well, I mean, asphalt costs the same, whether you're in the city of Sacramento or Fair Oaks or...
Yes. But the homes don't sell for the same amount. That's my point.
I just, I mean, I understand that. I'd want to give Mr. Penrose an opportunity to respond.
Thank you, Supervisor, and thank you, Mr. Petrovich, for your, bringing your expertise to this topic. There are a number of things that clearly affect the obligation of development in different parts of the county in terms of what its fair share and what its obligation should be. One of the, one significant issue here that you just were talking about is whether it's done in the city or whether it's done in the unincorporated area of the county, has largely to do what the infrastructure obligation is that's tied to that development. And what I mean is that if you're building within a more urbanized area where a lot of the... I just want to bring that to the discussion because you were kind of talking around it. And we are in greenfield area developments where there is a pretty high burden for infrastructure development for these properties to be developed, frankly. And this plan, when it was developed many, many years ago, looked at all those things. And so, it's actually identified, and Mr. Petrovich, I think, understands this, too, but it's identified a specific set of infrastructure that needs to be built so that this community will be a whole community. And you could debate what you think the level of this community is, but it brings with it this obligation, roads, parks, drainage. It's not just road widening, and the intent in this ultimate development out here is to be something that's pretty nice. I won't challenge it necessarily against, you know, one of these other communities, but, and those of you who were part of the original specific plan process out here recognize that. And we continue to do that in the county. Frankly, the developing areas along 16 or Jackson Highway are all taking those into consideration. So, in this particular area, there's an analysis that he suggested. As a counter to that, I just would like to highlight what I think we talked about a little bit earlier today briefly, and that is that this specific plan area has an obligation to do certain things, right? And so, what this financing plan has done is it's valued those in current dollars as accurately as we could do, in other words, saying this is how much it's going to take to do these things, the cost, and then has, through an equitable, defensible methodology, applied the Nexus-based burden for different types of development that happen in there in terms of what its fair share should be. I'll just use those terms. And that's what we see in the plan right now. If we wanted to do something that would reduce these fees in this area, it really would, it's going to boil down to a couple of things. One would be that you'd have to look at the plan area again and ask, is that financial, is the infrastructure obligation still the same, which essentially means opening the project up again. Nobody who's gotten approvals down there has an interest in doing that, that I'm aware of, where you might say, well, we don't now want to do a park, and now we don't want to do X, Y, and Z, right? And you change those entitlements. The other one would be to look for some additional revenue source outside of what this is, right? And to date, this plan has taken into consideration those elements where there might be other revenue sources that would help with some of the infrastructure, but it has not looked to replace substantially this obligation with some other money, Measure A money, general fund dollars, gas tax, you know, all those things, and you guys know kind of the cadre of those. So, it's really saying you have to carry your own obligation in here. The other thing that I do want to highlight is Mr. Petrovich has talked about his engagement with this plan development. There have been many developers that have been engaged in this planning process, the update of this, or, excuse me, the preparation of this financing plan. It's been going on for a couple of years. And right now, most of the people that were engaged in this process are at least at a point where they understand what the costs are, and to our knowledge, think that they can do some work. In other words, we don't have a whole bunch of the residential builders who have sat at this table, well, were sat through this process, standing up here as Mr. Petrovich is and saying, I can't do anything, right? Instead, what we've been hearing is get it done, right? We need this so that we can progress the balance of our projects out here. The last thing I want to highlight is that right now, there's an interim fee in place because there's the conditions, there's obligations, and we don't have a financing plan, a fee, essentially, in place. So, instead, what we had to introduce is we had to introduce an interim fee. So, anybody who wants to develop out there now has to enter into an interim financing fee, right?
Interim fee agreement.
Interim fee agreement. And we have some people who have done that. The number, or the cost in the interim financing or interim fee agreement is higher than what we brought forward here. So, I'm trying to highlight is just that in this effort over the past year, year and a half, there's been a lot of work to try and do what can be done to reduce the cost to the finance plan, but make sure that the infrastructure gets built. So, it's actually, if we don't take action on it today and somebody wants to develop, and Mr. Petrovich, I think, is saying he thinks people won't want to develop, and I'm not going to debate that parcel by parcel, but if somebody does want to develop, they've got to come in for the interim fee program, and they're going to actually have to pay higher fee, right, than what if we adopt this now, what they would pay to go forward with the plan as it is. So, I just wanted to kind of give you all those elements without specifically, you know, challenging one economic analysis, you know, or another one, so.
I do think it would be interesting, I think he called it a reverse analysis, to, in the cost of a house in that area, determine how much of it was fees. And it appears to me it's going to be over $100,000 by the time, you know, planning and everybody else gets done. And then we hear that people can't afford a house and, you know, all of those things. On the other hand, you know, they got to pay, the asphalt and the parks have to come from somewhere. So, it's a tough discussion, and I, you know, I don't know. This governor seems to be interested in housing. Maybe he'll subsidize it.
And Supervisor Peters, I don't know exactly all these developers that are saying, let's just go, but I can assure you, they're most likely, my instincts tell me, and I know Lennar is one of them, and probably the biggest, they didn't pay hardly anything for their land, and they're working on an upcycle. And as far as the future, when that land runs out, there's going to be a whole different landscape out here, a whole different environment. And I know this board's decision is not to create a plan that doesn't work for the future, and I know it doesn't want to create a fee structure that will never generate the majority of the money that the plan said it needs to. It just won't happen, in my opinion. And I think the reversionary analysis is a worthwhile exercise. It'd take, I'd be happy to help. I'll bring in some home builders, and it'll take 10 days, two weeks, to show what the net land residual is.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, I would thank Paul for his comments here today, and certainly respect his business acumen, and certainly his demonstrated ability to, you know, build and deliver on, you know, many fine projects, certainly in the region. And I would just say, you know, even before Paul purchased this land, probably some 20, 22 years ago, I remember sitting with county staff at the time and looking at North Vineyard Station, which was before us, but also some of the development properties that were kind of segregated in different spots where you didn't really have the critical mass in the Floren Vineyard Gap as to, you know, what it would take to put together a specific plan, what it would take to put a financing plan. And we were still in the, you know, early iterations and considerations of the North Vineyard Station piece. But, and I remember clearly on a whiteboard in one of the conference rooms upstairs, and, you know, folks that were in development mode at that time, actually bringing the land for, you know, a specific plan forward and zoning and so forth. And the two big ticket items were drainage and roads, relative to where it would be different than maybe in other areas of the unincorporated area or other parts of the county. But I think there also was an emphasis, and I think, Paul, to your point about quality, and again, I would emphasize, I think this board's take on that, and certainly my view of it, is that whatever we ultimately approve and hopefully gets built, that it be of a quality, that you have the quality schools, and you have the parks, and you have the green space areas and the trails, and you have the road capacity to meet the, you know, the current anticipated demand, and that you do it in a way that, you know, and you heard the discussion a moment ago about drainage, where downstream, you know, there's a portion of this area that pays part of that fee because, you know, it's a long ways from Floren Vineyard Gap to Point Pleasant, but that's in the same... a long ways from Flora Vineyard Gap to Point Pleasant, but that's in the same watershed. And so I think over the years, we certainly haven't perfected it, but I, nonetheless, as we've looked at all those things and you, you know, and then school fees, you know, are what they are and Elk Grove Schools have a tremendous reputation and, but building those new school plants costs, you know, new high school, middle school costs you, I don't know, it can cost you, you know, 40, 50 million dollars to put out, to put a plant in. And the financing mechanisms here, I mean, as you all know in Laguna and so forth and even some of the areas in West Vineyard time, they were using Meloroos. Well, that, that vehicle's not used as much anymore. There's some CFDs, Community Facilities Districts. But it all gets passed on in the cost of a home and/or either in the cost of the mortgage or what people are going to be obligated to pay over time. And certainly the commercial development bears that as well. I guess my point being, I think Mike Penrose touched on it, is that, you know, certainly it's a stark number. In fact, I did that math this morning when we saw those numbers, you know, the RD5 was at 86,000 and you need to go five times that on an acre on a typical development. And it's exactly the number you brought forward. And yet, I guess we could spend a lot of time here and it might be with the development community, but also folks that, who were going to reflect, I think, their voices is that what are the expectations for community amenities? Even though the housing price, to your point, if it's a price point is such that people can't afford the house, then I guess it doesn't get built and you don't get the commercial properties behind it. But I'm not willing to sit here now or ever and say that, you know, those neighborhoods, just because they're in an area that, you know, we, we were challenged because it was a rural area with a one-mile grid for roads and there were, it was overland flow for drainage and there weren't, you know, any schools to speak of and park districts that have to build as they go, no libraries in the immediate area, all those things. But I'm not willing to say that, you know, well, in order to get a, you know, a different price point, I guess you don't get that open space along the, you know, on Gerber Creek or you don't get that trail or your school, you know, you're going to be bused somewhere else or you don't get that school with those amenities. And those are choices, but they don't come without a cost. And I, that's your point. I mean, and again, you've talked with me about this and I'm sympathetic to it. And yet, for the homeowner, I think to have those knowns, if they can afford that, the home and/or to develop the business property, to know those schools are going to be delivered, that those roads will be hopefully widened, you know, either concurrently or even sometimes in advance of the development and that we get those amenities in there so that you do have that quality. Again, it may not be the price structure you see in other areas, but I would want nothing less for, for those areas, recognizing that the land valuation, and I, again, I understand your point, that folks who want to sell a five-acre parcel ground, if you've got developer A's looking at buying that or builder and you're already in at $400,000 plus an acre just for.
Fees.
The fees. And then the other sunk cost is that, you know, what, what sort of residual value, to your point, is left there? And I don't know that. I mean, but, you know, but, but if the market flattens out or goes down, then I think things will sit. And again, you've held onto your ground for 15 years and, and so I think we could certainly do the analysis, but, you know, I guess I would challenge folks, say, okay, if, if we want the amenities and they're important to communities both here and now, but for the future generations and they need to be paid for and there's no other alternative source to Michael, so what do we do? And you're the folks that build and bring in the, you know, the, the commercial activity and, you know, in some cases residential activity and many others. You know, that's worthy of a discussion here before this board, you know, maybe on multiple occasions, but I guess I don't see any easy way to get there in light of what we're challenged with. I guess you can say the area doesn't develop at all and.
That's my point. The revenue won't be generated. What's hard to understand too, and I learned this lesson through the development of Crocker Village, there's only about 10 public home builders doing business. Ones that are really active in this region are five to six. They're not based out of Sacramento. So they look at the entire US and they put a pin in the areas that work economically. This won't be one of them. This 5,000 acres won't be one of them. And so you're not going to see the fee generation to create the nice community or at least get it to a minimum standard. It just won't happen. And I hate to be the sole person in front of you telling you this, but I happen to be an educated one. And I, it's frustrating because, yeah, my one property is 37 acres out of 5,000. But it, it kind of represents an important piece of that whole thing because the only property for regional services or community services. If you're all familiar with Plumas Lake, those people are having to drive great distances to get services. You know, they're having to go to Yuba City. Now, this might not be as bad, they go down to Calvine. But my point is, communities are built off of having walkable neighborhoods, interconnectivity, service, quality services and it's, you're not going to see the revenue here. And I think 10 years from now, we're going to be sitting here revisiting these fees saying, what are we going to have to do to make this 5,000 acres work? And why not deal with it now? Why not look at a reversionary analysis and say, well, at least we made this decision knowing that there's zero or negative land values here and we don't expect this money to come in because no one's selling their land for zero or willing to pay somebody to develop it. Quite honestly, I'll probably take mine, get it appraised and deed it to a church. You know, take the write-off. I mean, that's, that's what we're faced with here, which I've been doing lately in some areas that just don't make sense.
I guess, Paul, I guess I would just pose the question, and I expect you to have the answer, I certainly don't, I kind of stated in my previous comment, but it's, so recognizing that is that, you know, you might be able to sharpen your pencil a little bit here and there, but, you know, to the point that if it costs, to what Susan said, you know, if it costs X for asphalt and it's going to cost more next year, it costs you in private side, public side, we know we got all the things that compounded for us. In fact, we have a hard time sometimes with some of the bids, just, you know how long it's taken to work that you're going to see out there this year? That Elk Grove flooring widening with the bridge, we've been working on it for 20-plus years. Remember in 1998, they said, well, we're going to maybe do it next year, so.
Well Supervisor, I would just say that people are going to be incentivized to go further out. They're going to be incentivized to go further away.
But how's that become cheaper? You got to get water and sewer and parks and schools to them. How's that, just because the land price? I mean, I don't get.
Woodland is becoming the residential community for Davis. There are developments that are occurring all around here. People are going way out to the, Plumas is exploding right now, even though it doesn't have services, because you can buy a home for a family for $400,000 because their fees are not that high.
You get that price point though, right there in Vineyard, you can get, you know, fairly a nice home for 400,000 in that.
Existing.
And some of the new stuff out there is going for that.
Okay, so you have $100,000 in permit fees and then you subtract another $40,000 for the finishing the lot. So now you're at 140 out of that 400. The building's going to cost you 125, 130 bucks a square foot. It doesn't work. I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, we're not debating, I just, again, it's one of those things is that, you know, what do we give on if.
Well, it's not a matter of giving on, but you're not giving on anything because I don't think the infrastructure is going to occur. So I've said my piece. I have a way out. I think there's going to be a lot of people that aren't going to realize any value for their land. And thank you for listening unless you have any more questions of me.
Mr. I would just say that, you know, if a week would give time to do some analytics, you know, again, this certainly could roll a week, but I mean, I don't know what else, you know, we had the discussion here, but again, social defer to you, obviously his property isn't.
Yeah, but it's a bigger issue than that property.
Oh, absolutely. I get it, there's 5,000 acres in that plan area alone, so.
Okay, let's talk about that in a moment. Supervisor Frost.
Mike, you went back and did some creative things with the Alberta specific plan. Is there, but what you're saying is in order to do that, you'd have to go back and revisit it and take things out and there's no way to work with, work with him in some way to help pencil it?
Specific to his site, there may be some, some details, some minor things that could be done that might affect his cost, but not really from the fee structure perspective, which is really what he's, what he's talking about now. Because he actually may do something different with the property is one thing he's considering in terms of its zoning and stuff that could change the economics. It still may not make it.
That's why I'm here is because my pivot point is to residential, which doesn't work. That's why I did the analysis. That's why I'm here mainly talking about residential because commercial's off the table at this point in any large degree.
And I didn't mean to give that necessarily up. That's just something he's been considering at that specific site. But in the context of this plan, this approved plan area, the obligations related to it, we have done a pretty thorough job of making sure that we're building the, the correct infrastructure at the best cost or the best price that can be applied and then distributing, as I said, those costs. The work that we did in Alberta were things that did not go against what the project conditions were, right? So to the extent that there may be a way to look at minor things that could, that could maybe slightly affect the cost, we may be able to do that. And on a project by project basis, we've been able to do a little bit of that, like an attached sidewalk versus a detached or some of those types of things, but not enough to really change the economics of what we're talking about at this point.
And I want the board to know, I'm not here to argue for my property.
Yeah.
My property doesn't, retail won't happen if there's no homes, but I'm looking, I'm just trying to make it.
It doesn't make sense.
Yeah.
So there, there's a couple.
There won't be revenue to do what's programmed.
There's just some related things too that I wanted to just put in front of the board today as it relates to this decision. One of them is that we do have builders that are, that are building and Mr. Petrovich knows of some of them. He's identified one at least. And we haven't done a check against everybody's, you know, initial land in, which is legit, right? How much you paid at any given time. The other thing though, that I think is just important to understand that if this process gets delayed, it does have a, a related impact that is not necessarily a showstopper, but we are looking to approve this financing plan to allow then a contribution from the plan that's collected fees through these interim agreements that I already told you they're being held, to allow us to expend those fees for the Elk Grove flooring road widening bridge project. So if this gets continued too far, and I would present that if it gets continued past the schedule we're on right now, it likely will put that project at risk just for a season. Supervisor Nativi identified that we've been at it for a heck of a long time. It's ready to go, but, but there's a little bit of a domino there. I just want people to understand that as it relates to this particular action that we're taking today. If, if it did get continued a week or two weeks, it very well could affect our ability to bid that project, so is all, so.
And I think that's short sighted.
So you think, so you think two weeks would delay, significantly delay a project like that?
If, if we went one, maybe two weeks, we'd probably be okay. DOT is basically, has been looking at the, you know, the scheduling for them to be able to advertise. They set it for the 21st, hoping that that would then allow enough time to bid and award and begin it. It just, we're getting really late in the year is all. I don't want to overdramatize that issue, but I wanted you to know.
Supervisor Frost, are you done?
Yes, I was just trying to figure out if there's anything we could do, more we could do.
So I guess here's where I'm at. And again, I'm not talking about the 37 acres. It's a much bigger issue than that, though those 37 acres are incredibly important to me. Is, and I, in order to do something that, whether it's what Mr. Petrovich is saying or just take one more pass at this thing, we don't have to start over, correct?
It depends. So I'm sorry to be less clear on that. If, if we do, if we go through a reverse analysis as he's suggesting, and at the end of the day, we say based on the economics that he has put into the equation, that something can't go forward, then presumably we'd have the option to say, well, we're not going to approve it or we're going to go ahead and approve it because there are some who have said that they would go forward. They may not be using the economics that he's using.
Right.
That's a possibility. But if we are going to go back and look into the plan and say, what can we do that will reduce the fees, which is I think fundamentally the point he's trying to get to here. Because even if you do a reverse analysis or not, project by parcel by parcel, then it will open up the process is my only point.
I understand that, but if Mr. Petrovich is correct in his analysis, and I don't have any reason to believe he is or isn't at this point, you know, we are in an incredible catch 22 moment here. I mean, we always are with development, you know, we need the infrastructure, but if, if we are pricing ourselves out of the market, then we're never going to see either the development or the amenities. And, and I am now less comfortable than I was this morning that I have that answer.
At least know where you're going, whether it works or not.
The problem, I mean, I am with you. The problem I see is it sounds like we would have to reduce the fees by 50% really, right?
And to back up what Supervisor Peter said, we already get complaints about poor infrastructure, if not lack of infrastructure.
I know you too well to make that call, but I'm right there with you.
Dumming down the program doesn't make me thrilled either.
Right, but I guess to the point, if we're off by 50%, then my God, maybe we ought to redo it because absolutely that means.
I'm not suggesting we are, but I'm saying, but you're saying in order to be able to sell a house, it's got to be, I mean, if Roseville was at, what was it, 30,000 or something?
Not Roseville, it's Woodland, but, and I'm trying to take comparable areas. I'm not trying to take these beautiful diamond-plated, gold-plated communities, but if the house value is really 400 or 450 or 500 like Supervisor Nativi indicated, that's easy math. It's real easy math. I don't think this thing breaks even with these fees until you get to 650 to 800,000, depending on the size of the house. And one thing I guarantee you, these fees go forward, you're going to end up with the lowest quality homes in the county because there will be no money to build anything but stucco ranch houses with no amenities, with no curb appeal, with no quality of construction. And that is a dangerous slope to go down because now you have communities that in 10, 15 years are blighted. And it all comes out of the building at that point. I know that with retail. That's something else to consider in this whole process.
I just think we don't know what the answer is.
So if I can, I'm sorry to keep coming back and forth, but we, we, there have been a number of real builders that have been a part of this whole outreach process up to today. They were aware of what this fee plan was and did not come out in objection to it. They did earlier frankly, when we, when we hadn't resolved some total fees, but there was additional work that brought those down. And I just wanted to highlight who some of them are and, and then maybe we can talk a little bit about what, you know, what your preference would be.
And in fairness, we did go through some of that exercise already. Particularly when Mr. Petrovich had some numbers that he had produced earlier that you and I had some.
But they don't own the rest of the 5,000 acres, they already own their own parcels. So it's, you got to look at it from, okay, now we're going to go out and buy land, track.
Go ahead. Yeah, and so I just wanted to highlight some, I'm not trying to overstate their position necessarily, but Taylor Morrison's in it, Bayless is there, Evergreen Properties, Gardner Park, Tim Lizzy, I think it is, Tim Lou, Castleman South, they're all property owners in that area. They were all part of the outreach process and tracked it all the way through. To date, they were aware this was going to be here and were supportive of it. I can't say that, that you normally get the development community coming in saying, charge a fee to me. But I do want to be clear that it was, it was, there was a pretty thorough outreach to, at least we believe, some people who think the economics work for whatever reason. That's my only point. And, and the land value thing is different. Lennar, we know is okay with this. And in fact, they're paying these kind of fees and making it work. So that, that's one thing. If we, if, if the board wanted to keep this on a schedule, if there's any reason that you'd want to hear from other people besides Mr. Petrovich.
We could still do that between now and the second.
It's possible, I don't know. I just know that there's people who think this works for whatever their reasons are, otherwise they'd be here.
My counter argument to the people that are already developing their own land is that they will have no competition.
Okay.
They just won't.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul. Is there any other questions, issues on this? Is there a will of the board?
Mr. You know, again, I don't know what one week gets anything except for I don't, would hate to see the Elk Grove flooring South Watt project delayed another year because of a week or two. I don't know that a week, if 21st, we'd be back here on the 21st. So if you think there's any.
I agree.
Value and you can certainly have others come in and talk to us. Again, you know, I'm prepared as I was this morning. I, you know, again, I'm not unsympathetic and certainly Paul had visited with me previously some week, some, you know, time ago about this. Again, I think we've all said it, I don't, you know, I don't see any, not just easy answers, I'm not sure what the answers are. I mean, again, you know, if we have a certain level of expectation, I mean, and again, I would hope that the housing quality reflects, you know, the pride in the neighborhood as well. I mean, again, I'm not, you know, and I, so we have design review, but it doesn't necessarily I, so we have design review, but it doesn't necessarily dictate what's being built. But so, again, if you think seven days, I mean, I could do that, we could
I don't think that we need
Is there a way we could pull that, was it a bridge project?
The way that we could pull it?
An interchange. The project you say that will get delayed for a year.
No, it's, it's a bridge and a road widening between Gerber and Flore.
Yeah, okay. Could, could we pull that out and make it subject to these fees, and then debate the housing fees later? I don't know.
What, what we need to have happen is there's been fees that have been collected through the interim agreements. There's been development out here. So those fees are in a revenue source, right?
Also, the proposal that's being worked on with the Department of Transportation is to do an interfund borrowing, which would borrow money from the Vineyard Plan, several million dollars, to this plan, to pay this plan's contribution to the Elk Grove flooring project. And without having this plan being in place as a repayment source, then that part of the financing could not happen.
That's a lot more clarity. Thank you, Bob.
But is there some accommodation, I guess Susan's question is, is that, you know, with a, you know, a revised resolution that would, you know, allow more than a week for discussion to allow a project to go forward, recognizing this plan, you know, I don't know. Or is that all, is it all a domino, and if you don't do X in this way, then Y doesn't follow?
The only thing we're toying with right now is whether we could look to another plan to do the interfund borrowing with. The thing that makes this work is that that infrastructure's included in this plan, right, as, as a qualifying expenditure. So that's why it was coming from the Vineyard Plan into this, to be, to get across.
What if we did the transportation development fee portion of this? That's, that's, I guess, I don't know if there's any water rez money in there because of the bridge, but it's the TDF, and the fees coming for transportation that's key to that project we're talking about, right?
That's correct.
Could you do that?
What I'd rather do, rather than try and establish a different financing mechanism here for that specific project, I just wanted to highlight that if this gets delayed, the one that we have in place, I think we'd have got to go back and do additional work to determine if there would be another way to get money across. This was the logical one because of the reasons that I just briefly talked about.
And I think there's some park reimbursements that are waiting, people are standing in line for, maybe other infrastructure as well. So, I mean, there's some other things that are, again, dominos, I get that. So again, I'm not looking for any major delay. I would just tell you, I mean, you know, because, again, I don't know what the answers might be, and
Well, and I, I will say that, I mean, I, I am responsible for us hearing it today and not weeks ago already. So, you know, I took that time to do a lot of this homework, including talk with Mr. Petrovich and staff extensively. So at this point, I am prepared to make staff recommendation, to move for staff recommendation.
All right. I'd second that.
Okay.
As I understand it, then if, sorry to interrupt, but we, we do need to go back through the adoption of these.
The public hearing and all, do we have to go through all that again?
If we can have our slide back up from cable.
What's that?
I'm asking cable folks to put the slide back up.
Well, in the meantime, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who has not yet addressed this issue that would like to? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing.
So we're coming back with repeating the same actions again as this morning, adopting the resolution to approve the Flore Vineyard Community Plan Fee Program, adopt resolution to approve the SETDF fee for the Flore Vineyard Community Plan, introduce a new ordinance for the, in the county code, for the Flore Vineyard Fee Program, and continue for adoption to May twenty-first, and amend ordinance for the county code for the Vineyard Program and introduce, and continue for adoption to May twenty-first.
Thank you.
You made a motion?
We have a motion in a second?
Yeah. And I just hope this is not a he-told-us-so moment, so.
Well, and this is not the, this is not the end of the discussion, so, by any means.
What, in what way?
In, in, when these projects are coming forward, I am going to, particularly in that particular area, do everything I can to make sure that our pencils are as sharp as they can possibly be.
Okay. It's in yours and Don's district.
Yeah.
unanimous vote with those members present.
Thanks for the discussion, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you again.
Okay, I'm afraid I have not finished. There are two more speaker sheets on items that are actually farther in the, on the agenda, and both are from Mr. Macworthy. So Mr. Worthy, I'm going to ask you to come up and address item fifty-three and fifty-eight concurrently, and I'm going to give you three minutes to do so.
I'm not going to grumble, because I get this all the time. Fifty-three is just what you've all been discussing here. When the government owns those entities, they feed you to death. Now, I felt government got something to say about utilities going up, and there's never been audit of finance where that money go from smother. You got a program over here goes right back to what I said, your housing going to wind up to be the shits, because those monies quit going out. And what these people here saying about the cost, I said right there Saturday past, Wells Fargo dropped five million dollars in Sacramento. People, don't you buy no house now with nothing down on it. Get some money to invest. Where is your house that you got equity? Borrow that equity now while it's up, because you're going to file property in this town, go fall flat on its face, just like it did when Ron Bevers, from Elk Grove, Home and Union Home Loan, at our, the judge got involved for overpricing. It's going to happen again. If you got, anybody got equity, I tried to show them, get a broker together, especially my people. Everybody got fifty thousand dollars in equity, parlay it together, and build that low-income housing, and you got a revenue, a supplement income. But where it going now? Fees, from what I hear today, fees is the only way this city can function off additional fees. Fees, fees, fees. And you got money sitting that you're not even using, and you ask people, say, what's the interest? Look at you. No transparency on money that's been provided out here. That's really, I'm going to stick to Donald Trump. These things will come back of the infrastructure. There's no audit on how much of the infrastructure have been completed. And I want to see that money earmarked, because the sale tax money is not earmarked. You can use it for anything you want to use it. That going to be a disgrace in the city, because Elk Grove going to take so many million dollars from your sale tax.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Matt.
And we have comments of the county executive?
No, no.
Board members?
I have one brief one. Nav, I mentioned this to you in briefing, that these reports of our levees that are being dug into by transients that are camped out there, either on top or on the sides, it needs to be addressed in some way. I don't know what the right way is, but I'm asking you to get OES and SAFCA and the Reclamation District, and probably the Sheriff's Department and other policing agencies, if necessary, together, and along with county councils' recommendations, and see what can be done, so that the people who enforce the laws know exactly what they can do, because this is a matter of public safety. And it's an awkward one to be, to be sure. But I think we need to address this before it gets out, any more out of hand.
Look into it.
Thank you.
Okay, any others? Nope. That's it, Madam Clerk?
That's it?
Good job, Mr. Attorney.
Are you sure?
It's a good job, Mr. Attorney.